Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmembers Berry?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the...
Approval of the agenda. If... I would like to swap the two proclamations if possible, please. And if there's no objections, the agenda will stand, approved as modified. Next item on the agenda: Proclamations. This first proclamation, I think, is really rather important. There's been some things that have happened in the community over the last year, and I really think that this is something that we all really, really need to get behind. And this is Driving Distracted Awareness Month. Whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimates that there are at least 3,000 deaths annually from distracted, affected crashes. Crashes in which drivers lost focus on the safe control of their vehicles due to manual, visual, or cognitive distraction. And whereas US Department of Transportation launched a national campaign in 2009 to end the dangerous practice of distracted driving. And whereas while these efforts have boosted public attention to the problem and built momentum for action in communities around the country, serious behavioral and technological challenges remain. And whereas studies show that texting simultaneously involves manual, visual, and mental distraction and is among the worst of all driver distractions. And whereas the problem is complex and the solutions require parents, teens, educators, employers, industry, and government to get involved. And whereas the first line of defense is personal responsibility by all drivers to recognize their own inability to safely multitask while behind the wheel, put their wireless devices away, and focus on the road. And whereas friends and family members need to use their influence to steer others toward responsible and safe driving behaviors. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the City Council proclaim April 2015 to be Driving Distracted Awareness Month in the City of Kenmore, and I urge all citizens to visit the distractiongov page. Take the pledge to drive distraction-free and ask your loved ones to do the same. I really can't stress how important that is, I think, to all of us. I mean, this is something that has hit our community hard, and we have taken zero tolerance. I know the police are out there in force and trying to do what they can to limit it, and if you're doing it, you will be caught. So please, please, don't drive while you're distracted. Next item on the agenda then is a proclamation. And this is one of the fun things that we get to do every now and then. We have serious ones like the one before, and then we have ones like this, where we really get to take the time and recognize somebody in our community. Whereas Lance Buddy Hunt moved to Kenmore with his family a couple of decades ago from Southern California, graduated from Inglemore High School, and currently works as a certified telex radio dispatch technician. And whereas Buddy Hunt has been clean and sober for four and a half years and has a one-and-a-half-year-old baby, and is getting married in September. And whereas Buddy Hunt loves the City of Kenmore and is proud to be here. And whereas he has completed a community emergency response certification class through the North Shore Fire Department. And whereas he has volunteered for the city to do park cleanup work and to support the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. And whereas he is active with the March of Dimes, raising money for Babies Little Helpers Program, and he collects food donations for Hope Link through the North Shore Cedar Park Church. And whereas he is vice president of the East Side Seahawker Chapter, a volunteer organization and organized, publicized, and ran the Kenmore Hawk Walks in 2014 and 2015, bringing together hundreds of Seahawk fans to City Hall to raise the 12th Man Flag and march down the sidewalks of Northeast Boffel Way to 192 Brewing Company for Seahawk Fan Rallies. And whereas Buddy Hunt's service and leadership as a volunteer demonstrate his strong sense of community and concern for other people and his desire to contribute better lives for everyone in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kenmore City Council does hereby honor Lance Buddy Hunt for his community service and involvement, and be it further resolved that in appreciation and celebration of Buddy Hunt, the Kenmore City Council proclaims April 22, 2015 to be Buddy Hunt Day in the City of Kenmore and urges all citizens to join with us in this observance. So Buddy, I know...
My wife was driving, she wanted to be here, but she had a doctor's appointment and she was distracted. And the Hawk Walks and all the stuff, it's really meant a lot to this community. And to see all the cheering and all the noise and drums and everything else popping on the street, everything you've done, the merchandise and the food, we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thanks Buddy for your spirit and enthusiasm, and we hope that we see you again this year in leading some more Hawk Walks because we're going back to the Super Bowl, so...
Oh yeah.
Next item on the agenda then is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express issues that are of concern to you dealing with the community, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Oh, yes, excuse me, I jumped ahead. We've got a presentation.
There's no one signed up anyway. If you wanted to just go ahead.
Okay, well, we've got a presentation. Oh, I see what you're saying. Fine, if nobody has signed up, anybody wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to speak? All right, we declare citizen comments closed, and now, presentation. From Wire Eight, Presentation on Salmon Recovery Priorities.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Jason Mulvihill-Kuntz. He's a watershed coordinator with the Water Resource Inventory Area 8, or RIA 8, or WIRE 8, or WIRA 8, however you feel like pronouncing it. And this includes Lake Washington, Cedar River, and the Sammamish River watersheds. And the main goal of RIA 8 is to protect and restore native salmon runs in these watersheds. RIA 8 is led by the Salmon Recovery Council and is composed of elected officials from almost 30 jurisdictions within these watersheds. Councilmember Van Ness is the City of Kenmore's representative. And it's been 10 years since the original interlocal agreement was formed and the first watershed recovery plan was implemented. And Jason is here before you tonight to summarize these first 10 years, talk about Kenmore's role, and discuss what's next. So without further ado, here's Jason.
Thanks, Richard. Thank you, Mayor Baker, and the rest of the council for having me here tonight to talk with you all. I'm Jason Mulvihill-Kuntz. I'm the watershed coordinator for salmon recovery in the Lake Washington and Cedar Sammamish watershed. I prefer that title to RIA or WIRA, since that's an overly bureaucratic term that no one really understands. So my presentation tonight is twofold. One, it's to let you know that we are marking the first 10 years of implementing our salmon recovery plan, of which Kenmore has adopted as their plan for salmon recovery. And you guys are one of 28 local governments participating or partnering in that effort. And we wanted to let you know kind of how we've done, what we've accomplished, and where we have left to go. And secondly, it's the 10-year, the end of the first 10 years of the interlocal agreement that you all have signed as one of the partners to that effort that enables that regionally-coordinated effort to restore Chinook salmon. So we're going through a process right now to renew that interlocal agreement for another 10 years, and you all will see that document come to you for consideration in the coming months. And so this is kind of to prepare you, give you some context for that document. So really quickly to orient you, here's a map of our watershed. You can see Kenmore's up there at the north end of Lake Washington, as you know. We have two Chinook populations in our watershed. We have a Cedar River population, and we have a Sammamish population. The Cedar population comes in through the Ballard locks into the Ship Canal, and it makes a right-hand turn at Lake Washington and goes on up into the Cedar River to spawn. Sammamish population instead makes a left-hand turn at Lake Washington, goes on up along the shoreline of Lake Washington into the Sammamish River. A few go up into some of the tributary creeks off the Sammamish River, and then several continue on into Lake Sammamish and on up into Issaquah Creek. So this watershed's quite a big area. It drains all of the area into the Cedar River, into Issaquah Creek, into Lake Sammamish, into Lake Washington, into the Sammamish River, and all of it that drains out of the Ship Canal through the Ballard locks and into Puget Sound. So it's a pretty vast area. The other thing I want you to note from this map is the different shades of colors on the map. The dark green areas are what we call Tier One areas. Those are our highest priority for recovering habitat, restoring habitat. That's where the salmon come to spawn when they return as adults. The lighter green areas are what we call Tier Two, and those areas are a little bit less important in terms of the Chinook returning to use them as spawning areas. They don't use them as often, but they're important areas to preserve in case, for some reason, we lose some of our darker green Tier One areas. Those are areas that the Chinook can go into and use for spawning. And then the rest of the area that's kind of gray or beige color is more of our urban, built-out environment. The habitat in those areas really is degraded and not very good for salmon, so we don't spend a lot of time restoring those areas. However, they are important for managing water flow and water quality. So a real quick timeline for you all. In 1999 is when the Chinook salmon were listed as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. And at that time, the local governments in our watershed, facing that listing, they kind of looked at each other and they said, hey, you know what? We could all try and address this individually as jurisdictions and work on this, you know, within our own jurisdictional boundaries to address this listing. But given that there's the prospect of lawsuits, third-party lawsuits for take under the Endangered Species Act, and they were concerned about the potential for the federal government to come in and tell them what to do in terms of recovery, the local government said, hey, what if we coordinate across our watershed to address this? We'll come up with a plan, and we'll tell the federal government what we want to do to address this listing. We'll do some local determination rather than having the feds come in, tell us what to do. So in 2001, that's exactly what happened. The governments came together under the first interlocal agreement, and they spent the next five years developing a plan. That plan was ratified by all the local government partners, those 27 at the time, in 2006, and we began implementing that year. In 2007, the federal government approved that plan as its Endangered Species Act recovery plan for Chinook salmon in this watershed. 2010, we were five years in, and we said, let's do an assessment. So we had a summit. We brought all our partners together downtown Seattle at REI, and we had a presentation of our progress and where we were at, what our challenges were, and kind of reconfirmed that we were doing what we wanted to do, and it was a great event. People still refer to it. 2015 now is the end of our first 10 years, and that was kind of the first chunk of time that we carved out for ourselves. It was manageable. Salmon recovery's a long-term effort, but 10 years is kind of the timeframe that people could wrap their brains around for implementation. We plan to do another assessment of our progress towards the end of 2015, early 2016, to make sure we're really focused on what we need to be focused on, we're still science-based, and we still have all the local community support and political will that we need to do this work. So as I mentioned, we are going through the process of renewing that interlocal agreement, and you all, as one of those partners, will see that for your consideration later on this year. So I want to emphasize that our plan is part of a bigger puzzle. We are one of 14 watershed chapters. Each of those 14 watersheds has its own plan. That's a part of a chapter to the Puget Sound Salmon Recovery Plan. And in turn, that plan is incorporated into the action agenda for Puget Sound Recovery. So salmon recovery is a huge foundation of the effort to recover Puget Sound, so I want to draw that connection for you all. In terms of leadership, as Richard noted, there's a Salmon Recovery Council that we have, and that is composed of the representatives from the 28 local governments. Councilmember Van Ness is your representative, as well as Mayor Baker as the alternate. And that group, we also have stakeholder members from non-governmental organizations, some of our state and federal agency partners, and even some interested citizens as well. The power of that group really is that it fosters a huge amount of regional collaboration and governance on this issue, as well as others. When we get into discussing issues, a lot of that ability to be there in one table and in one room, a lot of that comes out, and it's very beneficial. And secondly, it leverages the resources and what every individual partner brings to that table for a broader watershed benefit. So it's a really pretty powerful table when everybody gets together to talk about this work. And the role of that council is, kind of boils down to five main things. It's directing our implementation works, providing us with policy guidance, making sure we're doing the things that we set out to do in the right way. And it's building our capacity to get this work done, spreading across all the jurisdictional partners and others. It's advancing our funding strategy, figuring out how we're going to pay for this. It's picking funding recommendations for grants. And then it's also supporting the education outreach and stewardship work that we need to do to generate the awareness of the general public that this is work that we need to do to restore our communities and our ecosystems. So this really complicated table that you really can't read very well is mostly intended to show you that there's an annual cost share that each 28 local government partners pay to support the work that happens in the watershed. And what I've highlighted for you here is Kenmore's cost share for 2015. You'll note that in the far right-hand column there, it's a little over $7,000 this year. And it's determined based on a formula that is an average of your population, your assessed value, and your land area, your square mileage. And it's basically a proxy for each jurisdiction's, each local government's impact to the watershed. So what does that money pay for? It pays for a small staff team that I manage to implement the recovery plan, coordinate the Salmon Recovery Council and its associated committees, and do some coordination with our regional and state partners in this effort. The plan has 1,200 actions that are called for for implementation, so we spend most of our time focused on figuring out which things are the highest priority for us to get done and working with partners to implement those actions. We do a lot of project tracking and reporting. We also run about a $2 million a year grant program to get funds to local partners, both local governments as well as nonprofit organizations, to implement the projects we need to have done. And we communicate about this work as much as we possibly can to raise that public awareness. And then, of course, all our work is technically based in science, and we try to make sure that we have adaptive management built into our work and that we're instigating the research we need to do and we're maintaining that science base, because we need that to keep moving forward. I want to emphasize that we're focused on Chinook salmon recovery, but that work inherently touches so many other regional priorities, ranging from kind of shoreline riparian area stewardship to regional stormwater management, noxious weed treatment, ultimately Puget Sound recovery, as I mentioned before. So we have our plan. What does it tell us needs to happen? It basically lays out why our salmon populations are in trouble, what our goals are, what the actions are that we need to do to get to our goals, and then what things we need to do to measure to make sure we're doing what we said we're going to do and that it's being effective. And it calls for three kinds of actions. It calls for your typical on-the-ground restoration and protection projects. It calls for land use regulations and planning, and that's largely the purview of local governments, as you can imagine. And then it also calls for outreach, education, and stewardship priorities, those things that we need to do to, like I said, raise the public awareness, make sure that we're reaching out to everybody that we can to tell them why it's important that we do this work. What have we accomplished? In terms of funding and projects, we have 100 projects that have either been completed or are currently actively being implemented across the watershed. This map shows you the distribution of those projects, and on the red and blue dots you can see. So we do work throughout the watershed. However, in the first 10 years, the plan that we had for the first 10 years of implementing projects, we're only 22% of the way done with that. And that's not because we don't know what we need to do. We have a great prioritized list for doing that. We just did not get the money that our plan assumed or estimated that we would. So it's really a resource limitation issue. A lot of the state and federal funding we thought was going to be available didn't show up. So we're still working to implement as much as we can, just with the funding that we have. In terms of funding, we have implemented over $15 million since 1998 of local funding, either through the King Conservation District or the King County Flood Control District that have come directly to us for allocation as grants. And the important part about those local funds is that they've leveraged over $28 million of state and federal funding. So those local investments have brought in a tremendous amount of state and federal investment into our watershed that would not otherwise be there. We also get direct state and federal money to allocate as grants as well every year, and we've allocated nearly $20 million of those funds. So not as much money as we had anticipated, we would need to get it done, but we still are investing quite a bit of resources into this effort. What does all that investment translated into on the ground? We've done a lot of work, and it's created a lot of habitat restoration and protection. Over 2,600 acres have been protected either through easements or through acquisition fee title. We've done over 450 acres of riparian area treatment. That basically is a lot of invasive species treatment and replanting with native plants. We've set back or removed nearly a mile of levees, largely on the Cedar River, and restored a corresponding about 73 acres of floodplain, let the river reconnect with its floodplain. And that's reduced flood risk as well as improved salmon habitat, so a multiple benefit opportunity there. And then we've also restored over 8,000 feet of lakeshore, and that's really important for those juvenile salmon as they migrate out of our watershed. They need those lakeshores to provide food, safety, and those sorts of things as they get out of our watershed into Puget Sound. So for Kenmore, a couple areas that are of high importance really are Lake Washington, the shoreline there that you have, as well as the Sammamish River. So I want to highlight one program that we have. It's the Green Shorelines Program. We realized that we needed to implement a program to reach out to private property owners on the lakeshore to make them aware of softer, greener shoreline alternatives to hardened bulkheads. There are different things they can do on their properties rather than putting in bulkheads that are more salmon-friendly. And actually, the way we've pitched it is it's more aesthetic for them. They get more benefits out of it. So we realized we needed to turn it on its head and not say, hey, do this for salmon, but really, these are opportunities for you to sort of improve your own property and make it beneficial to you. So we have that program going on, and I have a before and after picture up there showing the change. And then in terms of the Sammamish River, Kenmore's focused, you've received a couple different grants from us totaling about $150,000. And that's largely focused on the, what was called Swamp Creek Park, now I think Squier's Landing Park, to restore portions of that. There's currently one grant going on right now where you're a partner with some nonprofit community organizations to do some work there, which is great. And then a few other projects that we still have waiting to be done. So there's more work to do here. You guys have done some good stuff, but there's more to do. And salmon recovery, so we've done a whole lot, but it's a complex, long-term issue, as I mentioned. And so I really want to emphasize that the ability to recover salmon and restore the habitat really is in each of the community's hands. It's in, we get to decide whether we're going to have salmon come back to our streams every year. And in so doing, we face numerous challenges moving forward. We face the challenges of maintaining and building the political will to do this work and building the public support, both of which are challenging in long-term efforts like this. Secondly, funding. I mentioned we have not received the funding we needed to do to implement the plan as it laid it out, so we continue to think creatively and be judicious with our resources and make sure we're doing the highest priority work and looking for opportunities where you get multiple benefits when you do invest the funds. And then you've got uncertainties related to climate change and ocean conditions that are challenging for our work. We don't know what's going on out there in the ocean. There's a lot of research going on right now to figure that out and help us understand that, but those are going to have impacts to our watershed and to our efforts as we move forward. Luckily, on that regard, what I understand so far, a lot of our floodplain restoration, our riparian area work are largely the things that you'd want to be doing in order to make your ecosystems and your communities more resilient to the changes that climate change may bring. So we may be doing the things that we need to do ultimately, but we still look to find out what the results of that research is. And then finally, land use pressure. We have one of the largest, fastest-growing regions in the country. Lots of people are moving here. We're going to have lots of development, lots of growth, and how we manage and determine how that growth happens is really going to affect and determine whether we're going to be successful in bringing salmon back in the numbers that we want to see. And then I kind of want to kind of finish on the fact that local governments working together like this really do make a difference, so I want to really emphasize that for you all. In terms of what's next, I'm making presentations like this to all the 28 local government partners, give folks background, and then we'll have an ILA document for you all to consider in July. And at that time, we'll be looking for folks to consider and approve the document before the end of the year. So with that, I will leave you with some pretty pictures and ask if there are any questions.
Questions. Councilmember Curtis?
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
How was the original funding plan determined? I mean, to me, a project this important, for us to only pay $7,000 seems pretty small. For $7,000, we couldn't even kind of get organized to do anything, and here by putting it with your other people's funds, we can get other grants and things.
Yeah.
So how was that determined originally? And is anybody going to think about, rethinking about it?
Yeah, thank you for the question. It's a good one. I think initially, back when this was, they were developing the plan, they were thinking about, okay, what's the staffing amount that we need to do this work? And they sort of laid out in FTEs, you know, what they needed to have happen. And they needed a coordinator of all the work, and they needed a plan manager, basically. They needed a technical coordinator and some admin work. They decided not to fund an outreach and education person, so we've got three and a half staff as kind of the basis. And that's what drives that cost share, is the amount of money that it takes to fund those three and a half staff and the administrative costs associated with kind of running that group. And then for capital for implementing the projects, that's where we go out and we depend on our local funding sources. The King Conservation District through 2012 was, there was a levy and assessment on property tax. Every property owner paid a $5 per parcel fee that went to support our work, and then another $5 fee to support the King Conservation District's work. So until 2012, we had that amount of funding, and that really was the money that focused on projects. In addition to state and federal funds that come largely from NOAA at the federal level to the state and then get allocated to watersheds throughout Puget Sound and actually throughout the state. Those are the funds largely that have not been to the level that were anticipated to be. Both the state and the federal funding levels have been much reduced. We obviously had a recession recently that further reduced those, so we're sort of still in that period of time where we're having to demonstrate the real value and the real on-the-ground improvements of our work to make sure that people feel that they're worthy of investment and hopefully adding to what's already kind of the baseline, because we do need more.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, Jason, thanks for the presentation and all the details. It's nice to get this update. I apologize if I missed this, if you touched on this, when you were talking about the projects in Kenmore, and it has to do with the Lake Point One for the property riparian and the restoration, aquatic restoration. It says it's a proposed project. Can you tell me what has to happen and what the status is on the timeline there?
It's proposed, so I don't know a lot of the detail on it, because it actually hasn't come to us as a funding request yet. It's been proposed to add to our active project list. And so my understanding of it is that it's a partnership with the Department of Ecology in order to kind of seek funding through us. Somebody has to decide to sponsor it, whether it's the city or the Department of Ecology itself or some other entity would need to bring it forward and propose it to us in one of our grant rounds to seek funding. But right now, it's in the plan as a project that could or should happen.
Okay, thank you. And does the property owner have, are they part of that partnership, or do, I'm trying to understand who drives this?
I don't know the specifics on that project itself. However, when there is private property involved, the property owner has to be aware of it and has to either be supportive or willing to let the project happen on their property. So that's a threshold at which any project has to cross in order to be eligible for funding, so.
Do you happen to know, is it in any way connected to the consent decree that DOE had with that property? I'm just wondering if these are totally separate issues.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that or not.
All right, thank you.
One way or the other.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you. You also said we were doing something with Swamp Creek or Squier's Landing now. Is that the project in conjunction with the Snow King Watershed?
It is, yep. An Adopt a Stream Foundation, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Berry?
Well, thank you for coming. I was a representative for a while, so it's fun to see the progress. A couple questions. One is the inner...
Well, thank you for coming. I was a representative for a while, so it's fun to see the progress. A couple of questions. One is the new inter-local agreement. Are there any changes, anything that is substantial from the old one?
Good question. You will see a draft. There's a draft out for review currently, which Richard does have. There aren't a lot of changes. Largely, folks felt like the document itself is pretty good and the work is good. They want to keep it moving forward. There are a couple adjustments related to eligibility of partners. It's currently limited to local governments, and there was some thought that, hey, maybe we would want to allow non-governmental entities to enter into it. However, maybe they need some sort of land use jurisdiction in order to be eligible. So, there's a change to incorporate utility districts, possibly tribes, as eligible entities. Not to say that anybody's knocking down the door to join, but just to leave that open as a possibility. And then it would leave it up to the Salmon Recovery Council to approve or not somebody's application for eligibility. So, that's one change. The other change is an annual increase currently. There was no annual increase to the cost share agreement, so we were operating under kind of the same budget for 10 years, which is very challenging. So, they've added in a provision to have that increase with the cost of inflation as it's estimated, and that would largely cover the anticipated cost increases over time. So, pretty minimal changes, nothing that I would say is really challenging or controversial.
So, going back to the possibility of adding other partners, so you're saying going beyond cities, say a utility district wanted to be a part of that, would they sort of be like, I know there's a number of people like the tribes and all that that come, so would they be sort of in that category if that happened or?
Yeah, it would be a sort of non-governmental category. They would actually, this provision would allow them to be a voting member and therefore pay a cost share every year, though. So, not like our stakeholder members who do not pay a cost share.
Okay, so it's a little different.
But this would be for eligibility as a cost-sharing partner. And then the amount that they would pay would be determined by the council and in a negotiation with that entity.
My second question is, I do recall that we had, there's a website that has all of the projects on it. And would that be a resource that we could look at to see what things have been proposed for Kenmore, even if they're not currently funded?
Absolutely. In addition to the plan itself, there's a chapter that has the entire, you know, 700 on-the-ground projects that were called out as part of the plan. Look there. You can contact my staff to find out more of the specifics because it does have projects that aren't, that don't have sponsors but are perhaps in your jurisdiction that could be done. And then, of course, there's new information. There are new projects that folks want to do, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be, help me just a refresher of all the things that are out there. I don't know that I really want to look through the 700 projects. Is there a way to kind of get there sooner?
Yes, there's what we call the Habitat Work Schedule, which you can do some searches, keyword, type in "Kenmore."
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. Maybe if I can't find the link, I'll ask you. Because we have a lot of, we have really interested citizens who want to make the community better. And I know that in many cases, they're taking the lead on this. So, it just would help me to have more of an idea of what's out there. So, if someone says, "Oh, I'm interested in this," then we can kind of direct people a little bit more, so.
Right, and there also are other nonprofit or community partners that are well-informed about some of those projects as well.
Got it, okay. So, maybe just ask them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, I have a couple myself. I noticed on the per capita contributions, Kent was pretty small, given their size. They're in two riots, right? They're in nine also.
Yep.
They're in eight and nine.
Yeah.
So, their contribution in nine is probably substantially more.
Much more substantial. The only part of Kent that we have is their kind of upper watershed in Rock Creek, has nobody living in it, and it's just a small area, so it's really just a token amount.
Okay, fine. Yeah, 176 acres. The other thing on Lake Point, the riparian and aquatic restoration in the mouth of Swamp Creek at Squire's Landing there. I was at a meeting in March, I think it was on Saturday, March 13th, 14th in that timeframe, on, what was it, Willow?
Willowmore.
Yes. So, I know that there's a lot of work that is being planned. Yeah, it was March 14th. There's a lot of work that's being planned because of flooding that's happening on Lake Samamish, and they're trying to build a second channel, I guess, to handle some of that overflow. So, my concern, both with Squire's Landing in the mouth of Swamp Creek and with that project, is we seem to be getting a lot of sediment that is coming down from other jurisdictions. And in looking at that project and looking at the different options that was there, I'm not sure that that's really going to contain all the sediment or whether or not we're still going to get hit with more sediment. And it's always been a concern of mine because of the restorative efforts that we're trying in our portion of the basin, that shallow river is, I think, causing the river temperatures to be abnormally high. And I know salmon can survive for short periods in higher temperatures of water, but it doesn't seem to be very fish-friendly. So, I'm concerned that with all these things that are happening upstream, whether our efforts to either monitor or participate, because I don't think we were an interested party on that by design, I'm wondering, how are you going to start taking the downstream communities into consideration when you start planning some of this stuff? Because we're heavily affected.
Yeah, that's a King County project, so they would probably have the best answers for you on that. I don't have the specifics on what their models have taken into account or not, but I think that there are people that would. So, I would suggest maybe contacting them to find out that specific information. That project is an effort to, as I understand it, to do two things. It's one, to help try and address some of the lake level issues that some residents claim to be having, as well as work on restoring some of the habitat potential there. As you mentioned, the Samamish River's a low-flow river. It's largely channelized into a single channel that doesn't get an opportunity to kind of migrate around. It's been cut off from its groundwater sources. So, part of the project goals were really to reconnect it with some of that groundwater flow, try and cool it down a little bit by doing that, and then give it some space to take some higher-level flows if they do occur off the main channel. And I don't know specifically what it would do in terms of sediment movement, whether it would cause more movement or not. That really would depend, I think, a lot on velocity and amount of water flow. So, again, that model and the King County folks are probably going to be the best ones to give you that specific information. I think it's a concern that I would, as you mentioned, which would probably want to find out about as a downstream entity. And I think Swamp Creek even more so because you've got upstream land use that's really going to contribute to you guys, kind of being at the end of the line there. Before it gets to the Samamish, you're going to get everything that comes down that particular stream. And I think flashy events are going to affect that particular stream way more than the Samamish River. So, I definitely understand that concern.
Well, yeah, but Lake Samamish gets all that sediment from the plateau and everywhere else. And because of the watershed eight concern for salmon recovery, and because of the hatcheries that are off of Lake Samamish, and because the Samamish River is this pathway for the fry out to the sound, I would think that we would really want to do everything we could to ensure that they got back.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because we've seen, we've seen numbers drop dramatically from in the hundreds in Swamp Creek down to one, I think, the last reported number I saw.
Yeah, and that's not unique to you guys. That's happening in two, three, four.
And right, and so, I mean, I understand it's King County that's doing the Willowmore project, but still, the salmon recovery efforts have got to be taken into consideration. And I would think that's where your organization comes into play in whether or not you are behind what they're doing or whether it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, and we've been an entity at that advisory group level. I think that meeting might have been the public meeting that was rolling out what the advisory committee had recommended. And the recommendation that they're moving forward with is the most habitat benefit alternative, I believe, that the advisory committee looked at, short of removing the entire weir to restore the river flow naturally. I think they got to the point where they realized the weir needs to stay. However, given that, what can we do to really maximize the habitat benefit? And that off-channel habitat is really what's lacking in the Samamish to connect it to those cooler groundwater flows. So, I'm, from the alternatives that I've seen, and we have a member of my staff team participating in that advisory committee, the alternative that they're moving forward with is likely to be the most habitat benefit type of project that they're able to put in there. But I appreciate your concerns, and I think it's something we definitely want to keep an eye on.
Last question I have is on the Ferry District that's contributing now to the funding.
The Flood District? Not the Ferry District.
That's right, the Flood District is contributing to the funding because, I guess, KCD had to give up that funding because of some court challenges. So, is that deficit then made up? I mean, are you getting as much out of the Flood District as you were out of KCD?
Really good question. Yeah, actually, the transition happened almost seamlessly when KCD had to stop providing that funding. The Flood District picked it up almost immediately, so we didn't have a hiccup in our grant round at all. And the benefit of having the Flood District do it is that they have been willing to enable the funding to rise with inflation. So, as their inflationary budget goes up, we come up with it. So, instead of a flat amount that we always have with King Conservation District, we have actually increased the funding that has come to us by many tens of thousands of dollars a year, actually. So, it's been pretty significant.
So, then the shortfall's coming from the feds and discretionary monies, right?
Largely, the feds and the state. We're pretty unique to have those local funding sources as a watershed around Puget Sound. It's been a way to buoy our work. Most watersheds just have the state and federal funding, which has definitely not been up to what folks thought it was going to be.
So, to continue to push then on that federal level for funding discretionary money would be helpful?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I really appreciate Kenmore's continued participation. I do want to let you know you all have a folder there in front of you with some additional information, as well as my card. If you have any further questions, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. So, I think just because it is on the agenda and because we did approve the agenda, I think we really need to ask one more time about citizen comments, if there's anybody out there wishing to comment. Seeing nobody coming forward then, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Herbig.
Yes, I'd like to pull Item C.
Okay, so Item C will be pulled. And is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus Item C?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Smith.
Also, we'd like to pull the minutes for the March 16th meeting.
Okay, so, again, a motion with the two items pulled to approve the remainder.
I'll second that.
Moved and by Councilmember Curtis. Does that still hold? And seconded by Councilmember Sperry. All right, so all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda minus Item C and the aforementioned minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda stands approved minus those two items. So, let's deal with, what do you want to go with first? Minutes? Let's go with the minutes first.
Sure. Yeah, my concern was on the page three of the minutes, and it's under the industrial uses discussion that Brian Hampson gave to the council. There's no takeaway at the end of that. I know on some of the other discussions, there's motions and there's things that we're going to be proceeded with, but this summarizes what was said in the presentation to us. But if I recall, and I can think of four things that were going to be coming back to us, and it doesn't mention any of these, and the four that I have were a discussion on a business license for industrial uses, B and O tax on industrial uses, covering loads for the trucks, and regulation on hours of operation. And there may have even been others, but those were the four that I specifically recall. And so, I would like to add those as something that will be coming back to the council for possibly adoption.
I thought that we were going to be getting that back because I do agree. City Manager. Do you recall those discussions?
You know, I had a conflict, scheduled conflict that night.
That's right, you did.
And I came in kind of at the tail end of the conversation.
Yeah. Mr. Hampson.
You're absolutely correct. There were those four items that you talked about, and I think there was one or two additional ones. We were going to look at some more code nuisance codes and see how they aligned with other cities. So, I think there's a couple more.
Okay, so could we, could I make a motion then that we include those, the four I mentioned, plus whatever other ones that you have notations on, that we include those in the minutes?
Yeah, you want those included in the minutes, absolutely. And you will be coming back to us with those, right?
Yes, we're planning on sometime early summer to come back to you guys.
Early summer, okay.
Okay. Early to midsummer. Brian is really swamped right now, and he's short-staffed. So, I don't want to make a commitment that we can't keep.
Thanks.
No, there's a lot going on, so.
So, then we're going to add those to the minutes, right? And then we are expecting a return in early to midsummer, somewhere in there. Is that okay, Councilmember Smith, in agreement with that?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Item C, Councilmember Herbig.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Sperry.
So, would we approve those minutes now with the understanding that those additions would be made?
When we do that, yes. I thought we'd do minutes and C together.
Okay.
Councilmember Herbig. You had some questions on C?
No, I don't have any questions, but I did want to make a comment. I wasn't on council when the development agreement that led to this agenda item came up. And so, I just wanted to, and I had concerns about it at the time, I just wanted to voice those and maybe use this as a time to start a conversation. But I appreciate that the agreement that we have on the agenda is an administrative matter. The city council lowered the definition of affordable housing in late 2013 to 85% of adjusted median income in King County. Main Street has crossed all their Ts, dotted all their Is, and they've done everything that we've expected them to do, and we're bound to approve this agreement. I just want to point out to my colleagues, though, that 85% AMI, which we changed in our code, is not really giving us a whole lot or really anything with these affordable units. I did a quick search and found some prices for other units available throughout Kenmore. Under this agreement, we're requiring the one-bedrooms to be affordable at $1,523 a month for a household of two people. Listings for Kenmore in rent.com are in the range of $950 to $1,100. Two-bedrooms are affordable at $1,714 for a household of three people. Kenmore listings on rent.com range from $1,200 to $1,600. These units probably aren't as nice as what they'll be getting at the Spencer 68. They certainly aren't as new, but they are actually affordable. As we're recovering from the Great Recession right now, we're seeing housing affordability is becoming a huge issue throughout our entire region, and we need to be doing something to address it if we want to keep Kenmore as an inclusive community for all types of folks. And right now, our current definition of affordable is just not going to get us there. I hope that going forward, maybe at our later retreat or in January, we can have a more robust discussion around this because we're really not getting anything of value from this agreement. And we did give up $234,000 in projected property tax and come over the next 12 years in return. So, I would just hope that we can have a discussion about this later on. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Sperry.
You know, I think affordability is one of those where it's defined, people look at their life and what's affordable to them. One of the things I do disagree, though, that we're not getting anything out of this. We're getting brand-new development. We're getting a catalyst project. We're getting something that's going to synergize with the Kenmore Village. And I also do, well, I do agree that essentially it's market rate for the area. We did, the city council did basically essentially pay extra money through reducing the cost of the site to the developer to subsidize several units at 50% of median income. And again, you know, affordability is one of those tough ones. I mean, you know, a lot of people make housing affordability by having a roommate, or in my case, an adult daughter that rents from home, or, you know, people that live in older units or live in mobile home parks. So, there are many ways to do it. And, you know, I didn't see this project as a way to solve the affordable housing thing, but it's a really important project for our downtown.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Herbig bringing this up. I remember we had a discussion about it, and I think even in that discussion, we realized that 85% did not do much at all. But part of the, a major component of that discussion was realizing that for every percent you dropped, it was a percent lost in the return on the sales price, because it was a, you know, kind of a loss and a gain for somebody every time we wanted to increase either the number of units or decrease the median income and requirements. And so I definitely remember the discussion. I think it's definitely worthwhile having again, so that we can kind of fine-tune that. This property was a little bit different, too, in the fact it was publicly owned rather than a privately owned. So we were, I think, looking out for the net proceed bottom line on the sale, as well as trying to factor in the affordable housing component. And then, let's see, I guess that's about all I would add, but I would be more than happy to have the discussion again at a future time.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a discussion we need to have again. I think the affordability component in this day and age is really important. And I think that in our market right now, given the shortage of housing, certainly for seniors on fixed income and other affordability issues, that 85% is just too high. So I would like to certainly have that conversation again.
And if I might add one more thing, I think why this even stands out so much more is because we have, in this community, without the Spencer 68, we actually had a lot of rents that weren't, that were rather competitive with average housing. And we didn't, we don't have high-end rentals typically in Kenmore. And so to then have a developer come in and build a really nice quality, high-end rental complex, it makes the delta between what is a typical rental of a one-bedroom versus a rental in this project a lot larger. And I think that kind of skews the impact as well.
Yeah, I certainly can agree with that. However, I'm looking at what we're planning, certainly with the Planning Commission right now, and what's being talked about, that if some of the developments that we hope to see happen along the 522 corridor in this transit-oriented development overlay, yeah, I think we have to really make a conscious effort and have a really robust discussion on affordability and what we're going to want to do, so. Councilmember Herbig?
And I don't want anybody to think I'm against the development. I mean, I'm across from it. I think it's great that something's going in here. I don't have any issues with that. My issue really is that we gave a tax, we're essentially giving a tax credit to somebody who's building stuff then above market value because it's affordable. And frankly, on some level, that may actually drive up other rents, which could make Kenmore even less affordable in the long run. That actually really worries me. So I hope that, and I understand the weird position we were in at the time of selling the property, and by changing the definition of affordable, we made it easier to sell. So I get kind of the tough position the council was in at the time. But I hope that if, I hope that we can change this definition sometime in the near future, so if there is development on private property and somebody does want to take advantage of this, that we'll actually get something meaningfully affordable out of it in exchange for giving up the property tax for 12 years. That's my only hope. So I appreciate everybody's indulgence.
All right, so we're ready to vote on the approval of the minutes and Item C. Is there a motion?
No.
And I'll second. So all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda, Item C and the minutes stand approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the business agenda. Award contract number 15-C1409 to Gallatin Public Affairs for Media Relations and Marketing Services Assistant City Manager, Ms. Owsley.
Tonight, we are asking council to consider the approval of the contract with Gallatin Public Affairs for Media Relations and Marketing Services. Leslie Harris is joining me here tonight because we were both involved in the selection process, and we'll be working closely with our consultants. And from Gallatin, we have Bruce Groineski and Anna Boone will be working with us. Obviously, the economic development strategy, goal number one was promoting the image of Kenmore, and as a way to get the word out and to attract some business investment. And the council has prioritized this goal among the other main goals of the economic development strategy consistently in your annual goals. And we have invested in media relations and marketing services since about 2012, and have seen, you know, a lot of value in doing that. Earlier this year, we issued a request for a proposal. We interviewed several firms, and we are recommending Gallatin at this point. And I think we're very impressed with the way that they're dialed in, particularly to business audiences. And we really feel like, over the last couple of years, we've laid a really strong foundation on what are the strengths that we really want to highlight about the city, what are the things to promote. But I think we're at a point of now really zeroing in on potential business investors. And I think this firm is very well dialed in to those audiences. I went not long ago to one of their monthly sessions that they co-sponsor with the Downtown Seattle Association, and it's, Bruce and Anna can describe that a little bit more, but it was, that particular morning, it was about downtowns and comparing what's happening in downtown Bellevue and in Seattle with really top people in the development industry, as well as the mayor of Bellevue up on a panel. And so that was a good networking event for me, and also an indication to me about just the opportunities that we're going to be having to connect with not only media resources, but with pretty high-speed business resources. The contract is pretty standard, familiar structure. The media relations services, along with positioning, audience positioning, and importantly, and Leslie will want to speak to this, assistance with digital communication, which is becoming more and more important to us. And then, of course, there are other products listed in the scope that, at our discretion, we can pursue with the firm as needed. And as with most of our contracts, you know, detailed reporting on what the activities have been over the previous month, as well as regular meetings. So we're excited to get started with this firm. And Leslie, you have a few more remarks, and then we'd really like to have you get a chance to meet Bruce and Anna, because we're going to be seeing a lot more of them.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you for having us. I'm really excited for the opportunity, the strength that they have in the digital media. We, there's probably, there's a lot of opportunities for us to better connect with our residents and to our community, but also the business community. So I'm looking forward to exploring those new avenues, enhancing how we utilize our Facebook and our Twitter accounts. And then also, is there other social media tools that we could be tapping into? And they bring that wealth of experience on their team to that, so I'm really looking forward to that.
If it's okay with the council, would just like to have Bruce and Anna introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the firm.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, members of council. We're delighted to be here tonight. We've had a number of really great meetings with Nancy and Leslie and talking about the city. And before we get into that discussion, I want to talk a little bit about us and who we are. Gallatin Public Affairs is a, this year, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary, so it's really exciting for us. We're an employee-owned company. I'm one of the owners. And there's been a number of times over the last few years where other larger firms have approached us and wanted to buy us out. And we've just decided, as owners, as employees, that we really want to continue doing what we're doing, because we love it. We've worked with public agencies, we've worked with local governments, but really the bread and butter of our clientele is business. We're a Pacific Northwest firm. We have offices in Seattle, Spokane, Olympia, Boise, Portland, and Salem. And really, our core clientele are the businesses that drive this economy. We have historic businesses that we've represented for decades, and Taylor Shellfish, Plum Creek Timber, some of the natural resource companies, Pacific Seafood. We have also represented firms, new companies on the cutting edge of our economy, Uber, Facebook, companies like that. We represent Nike, University of Oregon, Regent's Blue Shield. So we are totally dialed into the business community. And that's one of the things that really excites us about, the partnership between our firm and your city. Because right behind us here, you're on the precipice of some great things. I mean, you have some tremendous historical assets in this city. You know, the history of the roadhouses, Kenmore Air, Bastier University, the city parks, St. Andrews. There's some incredible bedrock things that you have and you own. But what's happening, going to happen across the street? What's happening with these new developments? It's really a great time, I think, for us to work with you to tell the Kenmore story. And the Kenmore story is a great one. I mean, you know, from quality of life with Burke Gilman and near the lake, to the potential for growing a local economy in your city, there's a lot that could be going on and happening here, and we want to help you tell that story. You know, Nancy mentioned media. We do a lot of media work, a lot of media placement, but the other thing we do is we want to make sure that you are where you need to be, when you need to be. You know, Nancy mentioned the Focus Forward series. We're a lot like the city of Kenmore. We have to market ourselves, too. We're always marketing ourselves. And so a few years ago, we decided that we wanted to market ourselves to the downtown business community. So we created a set of breakfast forums. There are seven a year. We partnered with the Downtown Seattle Association, and we talk about issues that are important to the city of Seattle and its voters and its political officials. We've talked about everything from the tunnel, to the future of the Pike Pine Corridor, to the future of the Seattle Center, to, most recently, you know, trends, economic trends in Seattle and Bellevue. What's great about this is it puts us in front of 125 to 150 of the business and political leaders in the city, seven times a year. Those are the kind of events that you could have here. You could host similar types of events here when you develop that kind of synergy with your business community and focus it moving forward. So it is about media. It is about placement. It is about communications. But it's also about, you know, hosting events that raise your profile, attending events where you need to be with, you know, business organizations who would have an interest in locating here, participating in forums and conferences where the city, where the Kenmore story can be told to those audiences that might want to, you know, move their business here. So there's a lot of components to that. Leslie mentioned the digital piece. Three years ago, we decided to launch a line of service within our company called Digital Advocacy. We hired Jay Natoli, who was the new media director for Senator Claire McCaskill. He was on the cutting edge of introducing digital media at the federal level. And he's transformed that line of service for us. There are some examples in the presentation. But, you know, it's not just about a website anymore. It's about how you communicate, how you advocate, and how you build supporters through various digital means, whether it's Twitter, Facebook, and even driving to a website. Most of the media today, they get their news off Twitter. You know, that's where reporters are. They're on Twitter. That's how they get their stories. It's a different world than it was 10 years ago when I started this work, but it's an exciting one, and there's a lot of opportunity here, and we're excited about the potential. Anna, would you like to maybe talk a little bit about some of the clients we've worked on, or?
Sure, yeah, because I don't have a lot to add on our firm, but do want to thank you all for having us. We're really excited about what you're doing here in Kenmore, and really want to build on the great messages you have in front of the right audiences. You saw some examples of our work in your packet. I want to touch on one client in particular around media. We represent the Marysville School District and have been engaged with them since the tragedy, but have really continued to help them build positive stories about the healing of their community and about the great educators, the great faculty, the great staff that they have, making that a good place to work. And so, as recently as last week, I was up in Marysville with KUOW, staffing an interview. So that is the kind of work that we do with our clients. We also work with a lot of local governments, both, as Bruce mentioned, for them and in front of them, and so have gotten a sense of how clients who are businesses interact with them, see them. And I think that you guys are doing a lot of things really right. You know, Nancy has mentioned streamlined permitting, and that's something that we want businesses to know, that they can come to Kenmore and really easily or quickly establish themselves without a lot of the red tape that we know some of our clients have faced in other cities that I will not name.
So one small thing. Kenmore, Scotland's got St. Andrews in the near vicinity. We have St. Edward's.
Right.
Sorry. I know, I was just saying something.
Yes, it was.
We were there today.
Questions?
That's a beautiful old building.
Questions? Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. And I love the fact that you used the example of the streamlining, the permitting streamlined process, because that is a great asset to have, and I think it's wonderful that you use that as an example. I just actually have, it's more of a basic issue or a question. It has, on the proposal that you gave us in February, and I know at the end where it refers to it, it's the monthly retainer, it says $4,000. I was just wondering, but the agenda item states $3,500. Was that just a negotiated difference or a deliverable difference there? What's that?
Yeah, we had some discussions.
Okay, okay. So it's not?
The 35 is correct.
Okay, it is 35. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you both for being here. And two things. One is, this is a simple one, and then the other one is more of a thing. So one issue we do have is we're not in appliance. And I really want our own tag. Everything has to have Kenmore WA or something on it. Because you can't just search Kenmore, you know? I mean, you'll get How to Fix Your Washer. And so, you know, if, that's like been my pet peeve forever, you know?
So can I address that?
Sure.
Jay can put together protocols for your online identity that when someone puts Kenmore into Google search, the city will be the first thing they see.
That's pretty cool. But just too, what you were saying with everybody, you know, finding their news online and stuff like that, obviously, we want to be found and discovered, which is happening more and more. So the second aspect, we had a recent event called For the Love of Kenmore. You're probably going to hear more about it tonight. And we were told what you need to have a successful downtown is 20 restaurants and 20 shops in three blocks. So we have a few more to go.
Yeah. We're working on the block.
Yeah, we're working on the block. So, you know, you've mentioned the networking. Tell me a little bit of how you're going to be a part of that. I mean, I know it's not all up to you, but...
Well, actually, so we're really tied into the foodie network. We had one of the DSA presentations we did last year was on the future of, was the retail economics of the food industry. And we had the head chef for one of, let's see, who was there, do you remember?
Oh, Josh Henderson.
Yeah, he's like with...
This is last year, sorry.
It's okay, you know what? I wouldn't recognize it, but I...
Yeah, anyways, we had a bunch of chefs come in and talk about the future of food and tourism. And so we're very connected into the foodie network, and so we would make those relationships to, you know, available to the city. Again, I represent Taylor Shellfish, and we represent Pacific Seafood, so we're very connected into the seafood industry.
Right.
You know, one of the statistics when we were doing our research on the city was, we found that only 3% of your population who lives here works here. And so that means that everybody who lives here is spending their money somewhere else. And this, you know, the town green concept and getting some restaurants in here and some really cool retail could be a game changer on that one. So I think the foodie aspect on this is really, really important to building this out. And it's also part of the, kind of what employers are looking for, right? Employers want to locate somewhere where their workforce lives. And the workforce is going to live somewhere where there's a quality of life that they embrace, whether it's the Burke Gilman Trail and the lake, good restaurants, cool bars, places to shop. It's all tied together. And that's the concept that has to move forward.
Well, one of the ideas that a couple citizens came up with in our Love of Kenmore event, so kind of interim uses, and was like a food truck fair, or, you know, kind of best food truck and stuff like that. So, you know, people are wanting it. That's what I hear every day, not every day, but, you know, when are there going to be more restaurants? At least they have wheels at first.
Yeah. Last Thursday and Friday, I was down in Portland for a firm board retreat, and I went to a part of the city I'd never been to before where all the food trucks are. It was amazing. I mean, I've never seen, there must have been 40 or 50 food trucks. I never saw anything like it. It was like a state fair. And, you know, these food trucks, you know, they're always looking for somewhere to go. There's a food truck fair up in Ballard, right? And so why not in Kenmore? You know?
Councilmember Herbig.
First off, full disclosure, my colleagues, Bruce was my boss about a decade ago. And I've known Anna through various political channels for almost as long. So just put that out there. I'm looking forward to us working with, working with Gallatin, working with Bruce and Anna. They're good people. Quick question. So you guys have worked with the Marysville School District? Have you worked with other cities, or?
Yeah, so I've worked with, mainly with port districts, actually. And so one of my previous clients that I had was the Port of Centrilia. And we were hired to help launch a major development on port property that had run into citizen concerns. It was a lot, they were proposing to construct a large warehouse storage facility on a greenfield that was in the view of some neighbors, and they didn't like the fact they were going to lose their view shed. So we were brought in to reposition the project in the media and do a bunch of community outreach to address those concerns. And so that's a recent project that I did. But with Uber and a couple of other clients, we've done a lot of work with city councils. I think, how many city councils have you been working with?
Probably, I mean, 10 at least here in Washington State.
Yeah.
And I'll also add that the benefit of being a regional firm is that we have assets throughout the firm. And so, for example, our Oregon team has worked with the city of Beaverton recently, and I know there are a number of other cities that are represented or have been. So we also have the expertise and resources from wide to pull from.
Yeah, we are, our Oregon team right now is working on a project with Pioneer Square in downtown Portland that needs to, it needs some funding to revitalize it. So we're working, you know, for the square with the city to develop a strategy to find that funding and to revitalize that square. So we do have assets, you know, not just in our office, but across the firm, working with various public institutions.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you guys.
So I, it was interesting, the figures that you were giving about the 1% of people that live and work. I always gleaned some information off of the Census Bureau site. And then I think there's approximately 400 people or so that live and work in Kenmore, and another 4,500 roughly, live and come to Kenmore to work every day. I'm still trying to figure out where those 4,500 people work. And we have approximately 9,500 people that live in Kenmore and leave every day to work somewhere else. And the majority of that head off into the Seattle area. But interesting statistics. The one question I do have is, Ms. Housley, who directs the day-to-day work of consultant contracts in the city?
Well, it's totally through the staff and the administration. Obviously, we get direction from the council on the budget and your goals for the year, which helps us structure the work that we're going to be doing. But in this case, this contract's going to be managed through the city manager's office.
Any other questions? So, I guess we need a motion to award and to approve the award of contract number C14, sum of $0.09. I'll second. Move Dan seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Nunezki?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Viness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. 7-0.
Next item on the agenda, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Great, thanks.
Port of those food truck.
Next item on the agenda is approve of contract number 15-C1411 with Jacobs Engineering for West Amish Bridge Design. Ms. Overlees, Public Works Director and City Engineer.
We lost somebody. Shall we wait a minute? Shall we wait a minute?
No, he's not far away. I mean, you can wait if you choose, but he's coming back right now.
I looked up and there was an empty chair.
It's okay. He's raring to go.
I know. It's hard to follow food. Well, good evening, Mayor Baker and council. We're here to talk about the bridge, and I'm so excited because we're moving forward. I'll make some introductions. You know Kevin Kim with Jacobs? He's been here a couple times, talking about the West Amish River Bridge. And he will continue to be our Jacobs Project Lead. And I'm so excited to introduce you to John Vicente. He is our new capital projects manager. His primary job will be working on this bridge. So he'll be with us until this bridge is built, is the plan. So, but we'll also be giving him other projects, tucking them into his availability. So probably some sidewalks. I've given him our ADA transition plan, so he's so excited to work on that. So he's been here two weeks already.
When you're done, I was just going to jump in and add something. Chris stole John from Shoreline. And so they worked well together there. And John left a good, secure job at the city of Shoreline for the privilege of coming and working at a temporary job here at the city of Kenmore. So we're lucky to steal such great talents. And I think it's also a tribute to Chris and her reputation as someone to work with.
I have heard all about it, believe me.
Oh. John's great. So I'll tell you a little bit more about him, actually. So John and I, we did have a panel that picked him. It wasn't just me, but John and I worked together for about 13 years. And he is an incredible capital projects manager. He has managed skate parks, so he'll be able to help with our skate park project as a backup. He has done ball fields, he has done bridge rehab, he came off the Aurora Project when we brought him over. He is a grant specialist. I don't know if there's a color of money that John has not utilized, whether it's local, state, federal. So I think that that is just going to be a huge asset for us. So I'm tickled pink that he's here. I took great joy of taking stacks of things and setting them in his cubicle before he started. So anyways, welcome, John. And so tonight, we're here to ask council to award the next phase of work on the West Amish River Bridge. So we're asking you to award another contract with Jacobs Engineering. But I wanted to, well, one, let you meet John and see Kevin here again. But I did ask John to put together just a really quick slide that kind of reminds us all of where we've been on this project and kind of where we're headed. So with that, John, take it away.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. I'm real excited to be working for the city of Kenmore and working with Chris again. And just to give you an idea of her excitement of putting stuff on my desk, my first day, I had 35 emails.
Were they all from me?
Well, no, about half of them were. I had a stack of papers on my chair and several folders, so running and screaming right off the bat. So actually, it's great, I love that kind of thing. So real excited to be here and looking forward to working with Chris and just doing a lot of great things. So anyways, moving on. The West Amish River Bridge project, back in July 2013, the staff came to council to recommend a reward to Jacobs Engineering to start the Phase 1 process of the bridge. And the Phase 1 was looking at the initial investigation and doing a scour analysis on the bridge itself. Once that was completed, they were starting Phase 2, which was looking at a replacement versus rehabilitation option for the bridge. And after providing a variety of alternatives for staff to review, in February 2014, the preferred alternative, which was a bridge replacement, was approved for implementation. The agreement in front of you today is for starting Phase 3, which is preparing the documentation necessary for us to get the permits we need, the right-of-way acquisition that's needed, and to create the plans, specifications, and the engineering estimates to go to construction to build the new bridge. At this time, we're anticipating starting design around May 2015, pending approval of the contract. Construction, we anticipate starting spring in 2018, and completion about two years in 2020 in spring. So if there's any questions, I will hopefully be able to answer them. If not, I will defer to Chris.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, thank you, Ed. Welcome, John. I just was curious, so we've got the design starting in 2015, which is wonderful, and then construction not till 2018. So I know there's a lot of environmental and all that kind of stuff. Is design going to take that whole time? Or is there, what's kind of between design and construction, I guess would be a good way to ask?
So the permitting is quite a big element in a project of this size, with all the river and the wetlands and...
So permitting is going to be huge.
Yeah, the permitting is huge, just to, you got fish windows, so the process going through can take quite a lot of time. Right-of-way acquisitions, especially with federally funded projects, can take 18 months. Sometimes it can take up to two years. It really depends upon the properties, the property owners that you're dealing with and the issues that are involved. And then just designing a bridge, Kevin can probably address more as to how long it takes to actually design a bridge of this type. I'm not familiar with that.
Well, basically, although we may start in May, we target to complete the design package sometime in fall of 2017. So it allows about 18 months from between fall of 2017 through, you know, construction starting in spring. You know, they will go to construction ad. So we'll have to procure, I mean, procure the contract with the contractor, and contractors start mobilizing. So it'll take a few months for contractor to do actual construction, which is scheduled for spring.
Sure.
So I think it's a reasonable, for 18 months, including all the right-of-way acquisitions and environmental permittings, and because the West Amish River is one of the major water body in the area, has a lot of sensitivity. So I think it's a pretty reasonable schedule.
And the timing is actually preferable. Going out to ad in the winter period is one of the best times to get good contractors and get good bids for a spring start. If we start advertising any later, say this spring, then your chances of getting a good contractor or getting good bids start to reduce, so.
Sure. And then you have the fish window. But, I mean, the difference in a good bidding climate on this magnitude of project is really significant, so I think, okay, that's enough to keep several of you busy.
And I would add, we have an architect team on the project as well. And so obviously, working with you and working with the community, kind of on aesthetics of the structure, I think that's going to be exciting and fun, because it's not only making the new bridge multimodal friendly, but it's how do you tie it to the existing East Amish River Bridge? And having them, they still, we don't want to go, oh, look at the great new bridge, and oh, just different style, different aesthetics. And so I think that's going to be our big challenge, is how to tie those two structures together. But frankly, the grant money we're going to get is for the West Amish River Bridge replacement. So we'll be developing our process and how that looks, and then we'll keep you updated and pull you in periodically as we move forward.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to add that we anticipate having two public open houses with this project, getting the public involved so that they can be informed and possibly help steer us in a direction that might be where we want to go, especially with the architectural features and whatnot. So plan on hearing more about that in the future.
So then we're still working on the inception, we will have, continue to have four lanes open during the construction, that the new bridge will be built alongside of the old bridge. And so we won't, we'll still have four lanes.
So, and Kevin can jump in, but he, his team has spent quite a bit of time, and we are very hopeful and believe we can do constructability where we begin construction on the outside of the existing West Amish River Bridge. We'll probably have to close the substandard sidewalk immediately, so you have some buffer with the new construction. And then when the new segment is there, put the two lanes of vehicles while you demo the old bridge and then build up. So what is going to be different at the end is you have still two lanes southbound with a nice pedestrian bicycle facility on the new bridge, but you'll have a bigger gap between the East Amish River Bridge and the West Amish River Bridge, because you kind of moved the whole thing over for constructability. It's kind of hard to explain verbally, but by starting on the outside and then, you know, building up in the middle, they're not going to be tucked right up against each other as they are now.
And we'll be making every effort to keep two lanes open in each direction, especially during the peak period, the rush hour periods, and weekends, holidays, at night and whatnot. But there will be times during the day when we may have to close a lane or close both lanes and have one lane in each direction to facilitate construction of the bridge.
Yeah, we cannot promise at this point in time that there aren't going to be significant impacts and that there won't be at least some temporary closures.
Councilmember Herbig? Yeah, I remember when they were doing the paving on 68th, there was an evening that it was down to one lane. And we had traffic backed up onto 522 in both directions, at least a block in each direction. So it's a very heavily traveled bridge.
Actually, I do have a question.
Okay, good. Come on ahead, Councilmember Herbig.
Sorry. So when you're building the new bridge off to the south of the old bridge, is the right-of-way, are the roads or the lanes actually going to kind of jog over and then jog back? Or how's that going to look when it's finished?
It will have more of a transition than it does now.
Second, effect how much right-of-way we end up having to acquire on both sides?
We know we'll have to buy some right-of-way, based on what we know today. I mean, from our perspective, it's, there'll be strip takes that we don't believe were not impacting structures. So we will have right-of-way acquisition, and we'll have more because of our desire to build on the outside, you know, shift it out a little bit. So we will be buying more real estate than if we had just left it in its exact same footprint now.
Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, thanks, and welcome, John, to the city. I'm sure it was a real hard sell for Chris, but it's good to have you here and hopefully everything goes well. When you mentioned a temporary closure, Chris, would, I would assume that would mean you would go to one lane each direction and still keep traffic flowing both ways? That wouldn't be, is that something that can be done, where it could be blocked off and still have, if they have to close a major part of that bridge or the entire bridge at a certain time, it can still go at least one lane each direction?
I think we've done that before for maintenance, so we know it can be done.
Okay.
So really, it comes down to being strategic about timing and when it happens. You know, frankly, sometimes it's easier to shut something down for two days over a weekend than it is to do a one lane each direction for three weeks. So we'll always try to be strategic and evaluate impacts and try to weigh the pros and cons. But you're definitely right. I think that may, you know, still will always be an option is one lane in each direction.
Okay. And is there any chance, or maybe this is just protocol now, but would you have like a reader board out there that, so that you could message people, you know, a week ahead of time for major expectations?
Well, just like we are now with the 522 project, we have our big radar reader boards that we try to get out early to give people notice, so we'd work really hard not to have surprises.
Great. Thank you.
And Hank Heron will be there, right?
He very well may be.
I still don't know who this is.
Anything else? All right. So...
John hasn't met Hank yet.
Apparently, you haven't.
John needs to meet Hank.
I just found out about the crows tonight, so...
No, no, you need to meet, you need to meet Hank. I'm sure Chris can cause that to happen.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
So the crows, what did you find out about our crows? What did...
That they fly this way and roost in Bothell.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, somebody wanted us to write them a letter and have them, tell them to move on because they weren't welcome here, so.
Well, when they were first talking about crows, I thought they were talking about Game of Thrones, so I was really confused.
Oh, that's funny. No, we have a multitude of them.
All right. So, need a motion to approve contract number 15-C1411 with Jacobs Engineering for West Mamish Bridge Design. Is there a motion?
So...
Second? I'll second it. So been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, seven zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll build that bridge.
So Mrs. Overleash, you're not, you're not going very far.
That's correct. I'll stay here.
Oh, yes.
So update on parks and transportation funding process. I hear there was some news today, but anyway.
Hmm.
And the staff report.
Well, the city manager will help me with this presentation. So in a nutshell, I think you all know that we are moving forward on the project to have a community conversation about what, if any, work the community would like to acquire additional resources for. And we're focused on transportation, multimodal transportation projects and parks projects. And in order to do this work, we need some assistance. And so Rob, Debbie, Joanne, and I, I think that was our team, interviewed firms to help us do this work, and we have selected the firm of Cis Bane East. And we're very excited about this group of folks. They're very experienced in having community conversations. They've done a lot of work with the city of Seattle. I'm trying to remember who else. So essentially, right now, we're in the scoping process. It happened to be our project manager had an addition to his family in the past couple of weeks, and so we're a little bit behind in getting the scope put together based on where I thought we would be. So we actually will be bringing that to council on May 11th. We were hoping to do it in April, but we need a little bit more time. So we'll come to council May 11th. We'll get Cis Bane East under contract, and then we will likely late spring, early summer, start working with the community to have this conversation. Thank you.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For the Love of Kenmore, follow-up, next steps.
Your Honor, I have several items under staff report, so I'll touch on those first and then save the best for last, okay? First of all, no one-on-ones this week, if that's okay? I, my kids are in spring break, and I think there's some decent weather in the forecast, so I might take a couple of days off this week. I'm trying to figure out which days to take off. Also, yeah, we have seen some good news from the state legislature. The House transportation package was released just today, this afternoon, and we see both of our projects in there, West A, State Route 522 West A, and also the Samamish River Bridge. And what's even better news is that in the House version, the ask for West A has been increased to 12 million from the eight. So we really appreciate that, and that's really some good legwork that's been done by our lobbyist, Breonna Taylor, and also our legislative delegation. So we're grateful to them for that. And then also on the capital budget side of the equation, oh, back to, back to the transportation package. So that's the House version, so it's not a done deal. Now the House and the Senate have to reconcile. And Breonna Taylor, our lobbyist, is going to be really in on that, making sure that our two projects stay in there and that the higher level for West A stays in there as well. On the capital budget side of the equation, the Senate version came out recently for the capital budget, and in that version, we have $500,000 for Moreland's Park and a little over $300,000 for the Tweet property reimbursement. The House version also has two Kenmore projects in it, but they're not the same two. It has the bridge for the 0056 stream at Log Boom Park, has a little over $100,000, and it also has money for state parks to purchase that property right next to St. Edward Park. So that's also good news. The difference is, is how the lawmakers funded certain pots of money and to what degree. And so on the Senate side, one, certain programs were favored more than others and got more funding, like WWRP, which is where our Moreland's and Tweet property grants are. But on the House, they seem to give preference, or more even preference, to other pots of money. So again, those two need to be reconciled. It would be just so wonderful if all four made it in. It'd be a miracle.
You can't be able to afford the co-pays.
Yeah, that's another thing we'll need to talk about if we get these grants, kind of be careful what you ask for type of thing, the obligations that go with these grants. But, so we're pretty pleased with that. Also, tomorrow night is an important meeting on the regional fire authority at the Fire District at 5:30 PM. Is there anybody that's planning on attending? Councilmember Smith? And Mayor Baker, are you planning on going?
I was thinking about it, yes.
Okay. All right, so their consultant is going to give you, be giving a report on where they're at on the regional fire authority study.
Hey, Rob?
Yeah.
Are you, are you thinking of sending any staff members to that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, on April 23rd, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, there's an open house for Bothell's SR 522 project, Stage Three. And that's the project that gets all the way to the city limits at 83rd Avenue. And Chris Overleash is going to be flying the flag at that open house. And so she's in coordination with the folks at Bothell, and we are talking to each other.
I was planning on attending that one also.
Oh, great. Okay. So with that, are we ready to talk about For the Love of Kenmore?
Yes.
All right. Well, I, I don't know about you, but that was one of the more inspiring weeks I've had in a long time. And I think a lot of people felt that way, and we've just gotten a lot of positive feedback since then. Folks that attended have contacted us and said, okay, we didn't win the $500 grant, but what can we do to keep this momentum going? And can we do certain things to keep, to implement some of our ideas? And so this concept of co-creators and really empowering citizens to be engaged civically and emotionally in Kenmore, I think we're on to something here. And the key is to be able to leverage this resource and have these folks take the initiative and take on these ideas without impacting staff too much because we're already pretty limited on staff resources. But the idea is to tell citizens, hey, it's okay for you to do this. You have our permission if you thought you needed our permission, and you have our support. And we, we want you to make these, these love notes happen. But, you know, just some of the comments and some of the powerful ideas that Peter has come up with was, you know, if it's just about basic road service or fire service or police, then there's nothing that distinguishes cities from each other. And don't assume that no potholes is all that our citizens aspire to. Citizens also want things like beauty, art, social interaction, good design, walkability, interesting, fun. You know, and the powerful concepts of love notes and, sorry, I gotta hit my phone here. The garden hose solutions, embracing temporary civic experiments, competent failure, celebrating our successes, and many other powerful ideas can be implemented to increase this sense of engagement in our community. So my memo has a bunch of things we can do, and I'll assume you read that memo. I appreciate your patience on that. I sent this memo out late Friday night and only gave you the weekend to read it. But if you look at number five in the memo, he talks about enabling and supporting our co-creators, and he lists some things you can do to help our co-creators. And before I go into that, and I really want to hear your ideas and your reaction, but before I go to, go into that, I just kind of want to summarize the workshop that happened on Tuesday night and also the co-creator meeting we had earlier that day. Is this on? All right, so. Hello? Okay. So I've heard that sitting is the new smoking, so I'm going to get up and walk around a little bit. But, so we, we identified a few of our co-creators.
Exercise them.
And we only got a fraction of them to come because there's a lot of great people in this community that like to take the initiative to make things happen themselves and not wait for somebody else to make things happen. They're on the, they're on the extreme end of that continuum of engagement that Peter talked about, if you might remember that at the city council meeting we had Monday. He had that bell curve, and on the left end of the bell curve, he had the cave people, citizens against virtually everything. And on the right end of the bell curve, he had people that make things happen. In other words, the co-creators or the geniuses in our backyard. And I count everybody here at this council dais as, I don't know about geniuses, but co-creators. No, I'm kidding. Co-creators.
He's a stand-up comedian.
Um...
Sit him back down.
And I think all of you have, I think all of you have, I think that's one of the reasons why you're here is because in some way or in some fashion, you have been a co-creator for this community, and that's why you've been selected to serve here and on the city council. But we met with this group, and it was so fun. It was a group of about eight or nine co-creators, and they were some of our great ones, like Cindy Rustine, who wants to do her own little radio station for Kenmore, and all the other things that she's done in the past, or Deborah Shrebnik, who's done a lot, too. Well, she's, a long list of things she's done for this community. Her latest is her enthusiasm for waterfront activities. And the list goes on, and it was just so great to see the look in their eyes that they were asked to come to this meeting, and the city was acknowledging them and thanking them. And that was huge, just, just that fact alone. And then to hear Peter give them that encouragement and that advice was just a real plus. So that was a highlight, but I think probably the biggest highlight of all was the workshop that we had on Tuesday night. And, you know, people were, were pretty engaged, and I think the three hours went by pretty fast because I think everybody was having a lot of fun. The first exercise where everybody got up to the mic, or whoever wanted to, got up to the mic, and they said what they liked about Kenmore, and then they took what they said they liked about Kenmore and put it on the wall right behind you where all those Post-it notes are. That was just so fun. It made you so happy and proud to be in Kenmore. And so that really, that initial activity was so fun to bring that kind of energy and positive vibes into the room. And then we went into the T-shirt contest, and, you know, I think a lot of folks got their idea from our new business license sticker, including me. That's where my table got our idea. But if you look behind you, you can see some of the, you can see all of the T-shirts designs. And I think a bigger community contest for a T-shirt design would be so fun, and I think we could come up with some really unique-to-Kenmore cool T-shirt designs. So, but just, just the ones that were provided on Tuesday night were just a hoot. And, you know, like the Ken Morons T-shirt. Ken Morons, we fly planes. Yeah, and then...
So I don't really understand this one, but the sticker says 100,000 crows can't be wrong.
100,000 crows can't be wrong, yeah.
Making more, I guess.
Yeah, and the one right behind Councilmember Herbig is, whoever drew it was a good artist, but, but, you know, play more, see more, be more, Kenmore. You know, be more, I love that, especially since we are becoming more as a community. And then, then the Kenmore can T-shirt with the wings on the sleeves and Kenmore can bike, run, kayak, fly, row, crow, love, live, paddle, coordinate, hike, play, learn, honk, as in the geese. So that brought out a lot of ideas. And then the $500 grant, and we purposely left this all on here tonight, just as it was. The one that's missing, though, is the winner. The winner, they, they wanted to remember what they said they would do, so they took it away from it. But...
They just took a picture.
Yeah. But the winner, the winning idea was to put paint murals on the Cal Portland silo containers. And I guarantee you, that's going to cost more than 500 bucks, but maybe they're going to use $500 to leverage somebody else paying for it. I don't know. We're gonna, we're trying to get together with them to help them get connected with the right people at Cal Portland, but other than that, we're, we're stepping back. It's, it's up to them to, to make it happen. And, you know, there, I guess when we did the vote, there should have been like a feasibility buzzer or something, like that one.
A gong.
But that said, I don't want to, didn't want to squash any ideas, but I think that, I think the reason that one got... but I think that, I think the reason that one got so many votes, by far and away the most votes, it wasn't even a close second, or there wasn't even a close second. But I think the reason that got so many votes is because of the way that people feel about that site. And then the, number two, was it yours, Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Yeah.
The co-creator back there was in my team too, Derek was on my team.
Yeah, the Rainworks idea. And, you know, so I've already told Councilmember Danuski, pretend that you actually did win and go forth.
I have gone forth and have got some questions into Rainworks, and I found the product, unfortunately, it's only in Malaysia, so a little bit of shipping cost.
Oh, okay.
And it's not available at Home Depot, all the ones at Home Depot are not supposed to be.
I did Google search last night to find something that may be available readily.
Yeah, we'll chat, because the ones I found leave a milky white coating, which we don't want, so we'll chat. So anyway, we're co-creating over here.
That's great.
And I've talked to Kent Vaughn, our creator of Hank Heron. And in case you don't know, does everybody know what the Rainworks idea was? Was to do a Hank Heron scavenger hunt that you can only do in the rain. So I've talked to Kent late last week and talked to him about doing a couple silhouettes of Hank that you could do for...
Yeah, it'd be fun. So we'll at some point have to decide if we want to do one Hank that says, "Hi, Kenmore," or, you know, just one Hank, or if we want Hank riding a bus at the bus stop, Hank flying a plane down it, you know. So there's a lot of possibilities, but then they start getting a little more expensive too. And, you know, we will have to redo them every once in a while, so, for less than about a year, I think.
Yeah. And you might have seen the email from Aline Fisher with the subject line, "Wow." And, you know, she said, "Hey, what can I do to help keep this momentum going?" And I replied back to her, and I said, "Pretend that you won. Pretend that your table won." And so we're working with her on that. And then another table that, I think they, I think they tried for a parade or something. Was it Lonnie? Yeah, she's contacted us and said, "I want to do a parade." So, and just so you know, our approach to that, our reaction to these is, number one, we want to be able to say yes. And number two, we want to empower them to do it without overburdening staff. And so the approach we're taking is, hey, yeah, come in, apply for an events permit. If the city wants to lend some support, like police coverage or public works, because we think it advances our mission and our goals for the city, we can make that decision when we cross that bridge. But it's really up to them to run the event and make it happen. So, and apparently we have people willing to step up and do things like that. So anyway, I've done way too much talking. Your thoughts, reactions from the event?
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I don't think I've ever been to a meeting in City Hall that lasted three hours that nobody wanted to end. It was, it was like a, Brent's table kept going for about 20, 30 minutes after everybody else was standing up and calling it quits. It was, it was just an amazing experience, it really was. The winners, Dennis and Kent, I met with them today. And it's kind of interesting, neither of them voted for their project. And they thought it was, they just did it as a lark, you know? Hey, wouldn't this be cool, you know, kind of a thing? And now they've got to produce, you know? So they're gonna be getting together with Rob here one of these days to...
Can I just jump in there? So at the, at the end of the meeting, they took, their table were up here holding their proposal and taking a photo op. And right after their photo op, I went up to them, I said, "Now, listen, if you're gonna take this money, that means you're committed, you're gonna do it." And they went, they kind of deer in the headlights. And then one of them, there were still people in the room, and one of them goes, "Hey, if there are any volunteers that want to help us."
And they all came up and signed the back of the poster. And they got a dozen people with emails and everything, "Hey, count me in, pick me, I want to help." So it's gonna be a challenge to put that all together, but they're gonna give it a go. I was impressed with the whole evening, and it just was, it was just wonderful. And yes, let's keep the momentum going, and maybe we could, an idea, we might quarterly have our own meeting like that. We don't necessarily, it's nice to have a guy like Peter that can facilitate it. But gee, we could just, we could just have a gathering of interested citizens, and you got any new ideas? And especially after we get a couple of things going, and people get even more enthusiastic about doing fun things in the city.
Yeah.
I think what was most interesting about that meeting was, I mean, there was just a lot of people here. It was just a lot of people, and everybody left negativity at home. I mean, it was all positive. Let's do great things in Kenmore. And I think that was just, that to me was outstanding to see all those people here with all these great ideas coming forth, so.
And there were a lot of new people that we hadn't seen before.
Yep, a lot of new people.
That's good. Yeah, we had some out-of-towners, like the winning table had three people from Woodinville's 21 Acres. Yeah, so Woodinville's 21 Acres people are gonna help us paint our silos.
Councilmember Danuski.
So if, well, of course, I love the workshop, I love this stuff. If so many people voted, and, you know, Dennis and whoever don't feel like they can do it, we definitely have, you know, whoever came to the workshops, send out an email who wants to help. And, you know, you got a lot of people voting for it, you're gonna find some people who can help. And, you know, we had a lot of people in this room, which is great, but there are a lot of other people out there that don't know this story, and we need to keep telling this story. We need to keep putting it out on our Facebook, like one day, oh, here was one of the ideas, what's yours? And here's another one of the ideas. And just kind of keep it, keep it going. Because there's a lot, there's just a lot of people who probably also have all these great, wonderful ideas, but don't come to city council meetings. And it'd be great to engage some of them that we haven't seen.
Yeah, we've written a column for the mayor to follow up on this, and we do have some Facebook posts coming. I think we did one last week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of a recap.
We're featuring each of the ideas.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
So throughout the next few weeks.
And we're hoping that Kenmore Reporter is gonna have an article about it this Friday. Do you think they will? Okay.
That's good that we're getting the story out. I wanted to make sure it just didn't stay within the walls here.
Yeah, our next newsletter that we send out will have a story on it, and, yeah, so.
Councilmember Smith, then Councilmember Curtis.
Well, obviously, I enjoyed it thoroughly, and I believe I told Brenda it was probably the most enjoyable evening I'd had in City Hall. And so, just because it was so nice to walk out of here just feeling so high. You know, it was really very good. And, you know, it's funny, when you were up here, it just dawned on me, do you remember what your wife said, what she really loved about Kenmore?
I know. And that got on tape, and I don't know if it made it up on the wall, though.
I didn't see it up there. So, anyway, for those of you that don't know, she said, "Rob," which I thought was...
She said, "I love her city manager."
Or "city manager." But a couple of things, I really, really liked the T-shirt idea. And of some way to be able to, and I don't, I know we're not in the T-shirt business, but it would be really fun to try to sponsor some kind of contest or, and maybe that it's not even just the winner, it's like the top three. So maybe the first year, it's this, year, or halfway through, it changes to something else. Or, I'm not exactly sure what that could be, but I absolutely, what that does is, it's probably one of the best ways to increase the visibility to the average person. And because pretty soon, everybody, whether it's year one, two, three, or whatever, everybody's got one or two Kenmore T-shirts in their closet. And I just think that's a really neat, neat way to kind of express some art and visibility.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that comment. In Peter's book, he talks about T-shirts as a symbol that people have taken that step towards marrying their city. But maybe, maybe doesn't mean that they fully wedded to their city, but the fact that they're wearing a T-shirt that's unique to their city like that is a step that they're close to tying the knot. And then, and then the next chapter, a couple, couple pages after his T-shirt discussion, he talks about tattoos. And how if you, okay, now if you have a tattoo about your city, then it's a really committed relationship.
I'm not getting a tattoo.
You know, on the T-shirt idea, I was thinking of, I really like this one, Play More, See More, Be More, Kenmore, because of, because of the marketing thing that we're doing, right? And I was thinking of getting up a dozen or two dozen of these T-shirts printed up like that. I just think it's a great idea. I love that shirt. It just fits with the other stuff, so.
Well, and I actually absolutely love the Ken Morons, "We Fly Planes." It's just so ridiculous that it's wonderful.
Another good one.
But I also wanted to mention, you know, I was at the table with Cindy and the Kenmore radio thing, which I thought was really fascinating, and just hearing, she has background in that and everything. And I, she was apparently there at the co-creators' meeting earlier, and so I don't know what went on there. But I definitely thought that was a great idea, and I don't know what it takes. And frankly, I don't know anything about streaming and what it would take to do it on an ongoing basis. But I thought that was a, a really, she convinced me very easily that that was a strong idea. And I would, I absolutely would like to see us be able to post things, sounds like it's already happening on a regular basis, whether it's on the website or on Facebook, just to continually put these, pop these things in front of people for ideas. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, on your, in your memo, and this was number four on the list, and I know this was one of Peter's ideas, but I, and I would absolutely support a dog park, but I, I'm concerned about a temporary dog park right there in the plaza. And I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. One is the obvious, that I just mentioned about a month ago, about how we still, I'd like to look at it long-term for some time of, some type of a veterans tribute of some sort. And it's a natural with where it is and the, you know, with the flags and whatnot. But the other is, I think that could be very difficult to take away. I know it's a temporary thing, but I would, I would, I could see that that would be a very tough one for dog owners if you say, "This is what you can do," and you've used it for three, four years, and all of a sudden, now we want to, we want to yank that from you, without having, knowing that we would have a very similar, high-visibility, in-town location. And so I personally am not a fan of that, but I would be a fan of us trying to figure out where we could put one that's within easy walking distance of all these multifamily units.
Yeah, the interesting thing about the dog park that, I don't know why I never thought of this, but, you know, I thought, yeah, it'd be great for a community to have a dog park. Let's put it out at Twin Springs or somewhere like that. But he said you get extra bang for your buck if you have a dog park in your walking downtown area because it brings activity, and it turns people's heads, and people say, "What's going on there? I see people and dogs," and it draws more people. And so it's, you get, so you get the benefit of not just providing a dog park, but also the second benefit of bringing energy to your downtown, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if anybody's seen the dog park that Main Street just built as part of their project over there in Bothell, but they have, it's right next to the sidewalk. I don't know what the street's, I think it's 185th and one block west of the highway, but it's the backside. But it's a very walkable, it will be a central walking area, and they're right next to the, it's a fenced-in little dog, it's not big, but it's, it's a usable place. And it's, I mean, you have balconies and patios of apartments right there. But it's, it's pretty cool that they put that in such, what will be a very visible location when the whole redevelopment is done around there.
Yeah.
They've got one over here.
You had one, Dr. Curtis.
Yes, I had a couple thoughts. One was, I heard that we taped his presentation, and we can use up to 10 minutes of it.
Yeah, so internally, we can all watch it full, the full thing. But externally, he's only allowing us to show up to 10 minutes.
Does it have to be 10 consecutive minutes or 10 edited minutes?
Yeah, and so if we can fit it into our schedule, because Leslie's buried in a lot of other things, but what we'd like to do is, what did you call it? Kind of like a little... Kind of like a little documentary of how it happened.
So incorporate photos and be well-known image of the city, and some talking points as well, and then cueing some of those key points that we presented on.
Yeah, so what I was thinking is somehow use that 10 minutes that we can use and tuck it into something that's on our website so people can look at it.
Yeah.
So that basically, we could be rerunning his program without the full program.
Yeah.
I like the idea of the T-shirts, and I actually like having three. We, my wife and I do some antiquing, and we call that a collection. So anytime you have three of anything, it becomes a collection. And so then everybody could wear different T-shirts, and we could, when we have music in the park, we could have like a group, "Wear your T-shirt," and we'll take pictures, kind of a time.
Yeah.
And I thought a great place for the dog park was the blank lot right over here beside the car wash. It's empty, it's flat, it's visible, and, you know, obviously, we'd have to get permission from the owner, but they aren't doing anything with it right now other than grow the weeds. And we could either probably get it for zero or cheap and use it temporarily, and it just goes away when the building arrives.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hervig.
I want to second what Councilmember Curtis just said about that property. I was, we were talking about that at the meeting, actually, and I think it's a great idea if we could work out some, maybe we do some maintenance on it, and maybe we cover insurance or something for them, and it'd be a great temporary use because I think we need to figure out ways to take advantage of some of the empty lots that we have. You know, we have the parcel across the street with the cell tower, and there's, there's ways that we could, or at least it's worth exploring with the owners if there's ways that we could utilize it, so. And the council meeting that Peter presented at last week, I assume, though, that that tape is, that we can, that's public? And we can use that however we want?
Yeah, because that was a city council meeting, yeah.
Right, but that was most of his, I mean, that was a good chunk of his presentation. I just want to make sure that, okay, that that was public.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was thinking of the two pieces of vacant property here for temporary use for a dog park. I really don't want City Hall going to the dogs, though. I don't, you know, yeah, that's centrally located, but no.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
You know, that, and I don't know the details of it, but the cell tower parcel, I know who owns it, and I know that there's a lot more of that parcel that kind of, it's, I believe, kind of in odd shape. You know, maybe there's a way that the owner would be interested in, in, or maybe we could use or acquire the most least desirable development portion of that, which would probably be right by the cell tower, and maybe do some kind of a dog park there, either on a temporary basis or maybe in some kind of agreement with future development of that parcel.
Yeah, you know, when I first got here, that property was so blighted and ugly to me. Now I, I've been here long enough, I don't notice it anymore. But when I was new, I was like, yuck! And so Debbie, I think, yeah, Debbie and I contacted the owner and sat down with him and his wife. He happens to be a Kenmore resident. And we said, "Hey, we don't want to buy your property, but could we fix it up and use it as a temporary park until you're ready to develop it or sell it, or whatever you want to do?" And he said, "Yeah, as long as there was a sign that says, 'This is a temporary park,' and that the developer can, you know, develop it someday." But, because he was worried that if it became a park, it would become permanent and stuff. But, yeah, so he was open to that idea, but just one thing led to another, and I wasn't able to, we weren't able to follow up with it just because we had so many other things going on. But as of two or three years ago, he was open to the idea of us seating it, putting some benches on it, making it look halfway decent.
I bet with some volunteers for $500.
Bet it could be, yeah, yeah, definitely.
You know, one, one grant idea that I was hoping would happen, but I didn't see it, and, and that is turning the Longfellow property into a pea patch.
Oh, the one up by, off of 60 or off of 73rd?
Yeah. Yeah, because that, that has, well, it's disconnected, but it, you know, it used to have a water meter, and it's a great little patch of lawn, and where's this?
Is that across from Kenmore Elementary's entrance?
Yeah.
Didn't get that one because it was PTA night, otherwise all the PTA people who wanted that would have been here.
And I understand Kenmore Elementary is doing their own little pea patch.
Yeah, they're doing a discovery garden right now.
Yeah, discovery garden.
But the Phase Two is a pea patch, and they're trying to figure out where, either on Kenmore Elementary property, and then I, we were talking about exactly the property you're looking at, because it looks like you need water, so it looks like there's a possibility of water there.
Yeah, there used to be a house there, which tells me there's a water line there.
There's some kind of water storage or something rather on the corner there. I don't know what it is. Anyway, that's, that's an idea that's still in the community, for sure.
Yeah. And so thank you for letting us do this over the last week. The only, one of the things we did is that we timed it so that it was before the vision statement got finalized, and you're going to be talking about the vision statement with the planning commission on the 20th, a joint meeting, so in one week. So was there anything that came out of the Peter Kagayama workshops that make you want to do anything different as it relates to the vision statement?
Okay, fine. So we're gonna get in trouble for it today. I would like to see the word fun somewhere in our vision statement. It doesn't need to be a standalone goal, but if, if it could be incorporated nicely in one of the sentences, that would be neat.
I'll second that.
I certainly agree.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else? Yeah?
Were you gonna go on the wood sculpture memo next?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, that's next, so I need to pull that up, but in the adopted budget, we have a line in there in the public art section about investigating the feasibility of doing a wood sculpture at Rhododendron Park. Actually, I just need to look here.
While you're looking that up, could I ask a question of the council? Is this tree that's been here, I know it's very visible from the road, is it visible from the park as well, or is it sort of something you have to kind of walk to and discover?
You, I think it's on a trail. You do have to walk to it.
Yeah, it's not obvious from the park.
So it's not, so it's one of those little things that you could discover? Got it, okay.
So Councilmember Smith knows his trees, and he has identified it as a Cedrus atlantica, and I understand that it was blown down in a storm back in '07 or '06 or something, and I think it was maybe briefly discussed about doing something with it back then. So you don't have funds specifically budgeted to do this, to do a wood sculpture here, but I am recommending that, you know, this, this is, would be a great visible on a main arterial, you know, to do a sculpture here, I think, would be something that would really be a love note to the community and, and something that people could even go out of their way to drive to. So in the memo, it talks about how a similar sculpture, like the one that we're thinking about, was done in Gig Harbor, and you'll, you'll see pictures in the memo about it. We had the artist from Gig Harbor come out and check out this tree, and he inspected it, and he says it's in good condition for doing a sculpture. We would do, if we were to go down this path, we would do a, a call for artists, so Mr. Sam O'Dusky may or may not be selected, but he did give us a ballpark estimate of what he would charge for something like, similar to what he did in Gig Harbor, and that was 21, or $27,000. So we, you know, roughly think it'll be about a $30,000 project if, if we're to do it to the same detail as what we saw in Gig Harbor. In the memo, I talk about some funding options. There's some unobligated funds in the public art fund, and then there's also some, we think, you know, there's funds available in the general fund mainly due to some salary savings we're seeing from vacant positions or not, or yet-to-be-fulfilled positions. Also, though, I just want to point out that, you know, we do plan on doing art in the town green, so I think we need to make sure we reserve some funds there, both in the, in the pavilion building and outside of the pavilion building. I think we need to have some, some art in, in the town green, so I'd like to make sure that we reserve some funds for that.
So I like the idea of turning the, the old stump into art. I like the idea of using the art fund. I don't like the idea of using general fund.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm, I'm not a super-big fan of this, but I can also say, if everybody was on board with it, I wouldn't, wouldn't squabble about it. I would, I think the location, you know, the picture that's shown of this stump, it's very bright. It's, it's, I would say, eight months of the year, it's very dark right there, and the one thing you'd want to do is absolutely increase the visibility through lighting and maybe even opening up a little bit of the vegetation there, because it really is dark in there. And, and I think that also makes it easier for vandalism, because it is so dark. The, the other thing, I guess, when I look at the, the funds for it, and I think, gosh, you know, we were talking about these really cool artistic bike racks and everything, and for $30,000, we could, we could put bike racks all over the city, which would be really cool, and, and the town green, as, as Rob had mentioned, as an alternative. And then the other thing is, I, I would like to hope that when we do our, our bridge, which we discussed earlier this evening, that we can have something that's sort of iconic in some artistic manner, whether it's a functional part of it, but something that kind of stands out is Kenmore's Bridge. It would be kind of neat. Doesn't have to be inexpensive, whatever it is, but it would be neat to have something that's, that's sort of a unique function, and I know if we keep chipping away in our art fund, we, we lose that ability to do that, and so, and then lastly, the only other thing.
One clarification on that. Chris, we have, we're assuming in the Semamish River Bridge that art is going to be part of that project and part of that project budget, correct? So we wouldn't have to tap into the art fund for, for that bridge. Oh, I have the mic over here.
So right now, you know that the bridge isn't completely funded, but we do have a significant chunk of our own money kind of programmed, so to a certain extent, I would argue that we have funds in the project that could be used either for artist-made building parts, which is what Councilmember Smith was referencing, you just kind of incorporate it into the structure, and/or art that is added later, whether it's a sculpture or mural or something separate. So there's money in there, in the project, that can be used for art. You can't typically use, to, to some degree, you can use grant money. If you're going to put in a handrail, you can use money for handrail, but if you want to spend, you know, a chunk of money to make it nicer or artistic, then we likely would be on the hook for that. So I would argue that there's, based on what we know today, ample money to do cool things with a bridge, whether it's artist, architect, structural, or added art. It just kind of comes to what do we want to do and will a grant pay for it, so. But we have the money in there for an architect and for an artist at this point.
See, in addition, the 12 million on West A is also contributing to the art fund, and the bridge itself is contributing to the art fund, right?
Yeah.
Well, West A has art in it, so West A will not put money in the art fund, and then, but the bridge project will be required to either spend 1% of our art in the project or put it in the fund, and I guess I've been operating under the assumption that it would stay with the project and we'd do cool stuff with it. Based on my experience, we're going to spend more than 1% doing fun stuff.
Is West B contributing to the fund?
No, we would probably have art things incorporated in West B to be consistent with a corridor.
Okay, the only other thing I want to add, thank you, Chris, is that it would, I, I know it's been talked about many times, and it's something interactive, like the waiting for the interurban down in Fremont, where people can dress up something, or they can make it look holiday-ish or Halloween-ish or whatever they want, and that's, that would be a really a neat feature also, and I just, so, those are some alternatives that I would also love to see.
Councilmember Herbig?
So I'm just making sure I heard something correctly. So Rob, is there no money in the town green or pavilion in the budget that we, that we just increased a couple weeks ago? Is there no money in there for art?
So we do have money for interior furnishings and exterior furnishings as well. We might be able to get some art from there, but if we want to do like a really nice art piece in the town green or inside, yeah, we'll probably need to tap into the art fund, so.
Councilmember Danuski?
One thought I had, I, I kind of like the idea of doing a sculpture, but it's not really viewable from the park, so you're seeing it from the road, which probably suggests that you don't need to have it as intricate and detailed as some of these examples, which could make it significantly cheaper if we just have something fun that surprises you and then you're driving on your way. Wouldn't want the distracted drivers to be looking at the details.
I didn't think about that.
I heard about that. So that's just one idea.
Deputy Mayor?
I had the same feeling about it, that it could be something simple. It might be less expensive art, cost-wise, to, to make it more simple. These, the ones, the examples are very intricate and, and really great pieces of art, but I don't think this location would be for that. But I also, I'm concerned about the fact that it's a tree, and yes, it's got a firm foundation maybe now, but when they do a totem pole, they don't use a tree. They cut the tree down, and they cut the totem pole laying down, and then they erect the totem pole, maybe on a concrete base. I'm concerned about the base of this tree rotting out, and how long is the life of this piece of art, if that's the case? And, you know, it might, you know, 20 years from now be done, or 10 years from now, I don't know. What kind of a tree is, is this, that, that genus and species, is that a cedar?
Yeah.
Well, then it's more likely to stick around for a long time, but I just have that concern. The Indians made totem poles out of cedar too, but they, I don't.
It's a different type of cedar than they use. That's, this is actually called a true cedar. The others, the red cedar.
Yeah, okay. Oh, and one other thing. Didn't we decline to buy that canoe and use the dollars that we were going to put in that canoe, that artwork of the canoe at the art show, and a piece of art in the town green?
That doesn't ring a bell.
Even the money for the town green, I thought that was one of the reasons we didn't go for the.
We were, we took the money on the canoe, but I didn't know it was dedicated to a purpose.
No, it wasn't dedicated, but there's money there.
Speaking of that canoe, they might be willing to loan it to us for a period of time, probably with the hopes that we'll buy it, but.
I think it'd be cool. For, you know, for the, I think this came up in the one-on-one, for the Kenmore Town Green, you know, in the indoor part, that would be really a cool thing to hang up there or something, because it, it reinforces the, the connection to the water, so, it's an aspect, anyway, go ahead.
I think you make a good point about making it a little more simple, even like, just having like a bald eagle carved at the top or something would, would be more simple, but still noticeable. But Mayor, you'd also, I don't, I think you've kind of maybe hit a dead end with this, but I think you were talking about a story pole with.
Yeah, the mucklechutes. The mucklechutes would come out and carve and make it into an event, but it's not cheap.
No.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you. I know the mayor has been very patient with this. I went from, you've got to be kidding, was where I started with this, and now after all of this love of Kenmore, you feel like you should make everything kind of fun. I guess maybe a couple thoughts. One is, part of this is timing. I, I'd like to, in some ways, kind of hold off until we, we kind of see where we're at with the town green and really kind of focus on that right now. I guess a sec, another piece of this is if we did go to, or for a request for proposals or call for artists, I kind of forgot how that all works, other than they propose things, and then as far as the budget or the amount that they charge, is that part of their proposal?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's potentially, we could have quite a range of, of options, and I suppose if you call for artists, there is some inherent, like, okay, we're going to do something. I mean, I would imagine, you can't just say, no, we don't want to do anything. I don't know, maybe, maybe not.
You could do a call for artists and then say, hey, it's, it's not funded right now, or it is funded right now, and then you could implement it whenever you're ready.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, there is funding in the budget for, at least for preliminary stuff, right? I mean, we did approve that, right?
You, you didn't put a line item saying, we're allocating this much money, but in one of the goals for the art fund, you said, assess the feasibility, and so that's what we're doing.
So theoretically, we just, we could do a call for artists, and if it just was way too expensive or wanted to do something with art, we wouldn't necessarily have to have to do anything at that point.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Councilmember Curtis?
Well, it seems like another way, instead of asking for, come up with a creative idea and let them tell us how much it's going to be, say, what can you do for $5,000 bucks?
Those are the budget, and then go.
Yeah. So it might be, you know, simple, but it might have more color to it, or, I mean, that's an arts job. For $5,000 bucks, it seems like you should be able to get something that's interesting.
$5,000 challenge.
That ain't zero for me.
Yeah, I, I would be very surprised if you get something company, company out here to do any decent carving for $5,000, but.
No, I bet you would. People with a chainsaw, they'd do it.
I'd rather not put a dollar figure on it and let them come up with some ideas and see where, where it went to.
Yeah.
Maybe give them a range.
You could even do that. Councilmember Herbig?
I'm generally supportive of the idea. I do like the idea, though, something a little bit simpler, a little bit more friendly for folks driving by, and hopefully, something a little cheaper. But, but I, I like the creativity, I like the idea of reusing that, that stump, and I think we could have a lot of fun with that with, I mean, yeah, we could have a lot of fun with that with herons and with float planes.
Could be hay.
Poor guy's going to be everywhere.
There's a lot to do with it, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Where was I going with this? Oh, who's going to make the decision as to what art we would select? Is this a council decision, or it will be an arts committee of citizens?
No, it will, yeah, it's going to be, I would think it would be city manager.
City manager will decide what's pretty and what's. I mean, we could, we could pick an artist, we could pick an artist and then take pot luck as to what the art comes up with, the artist comes up with, or is the artist, group of artists going to come up with conceptual ideas?
They usually do.
And then we make a decision as to what we like, because what's, what's good art to one person is, oh, yuck to somebody else.
Well, yeah, you, we can do it however you, you want. I recommend that, Abbot, two or three people would help me out with selecting, and then we bring the idea to you, and if you think it's terrible, then don't do it. But one thing that I've, one thing I've noticed over my career is art by committee is just not a good way to go.
No.
And in an unnamed city I worked for, there was an arts commission that met once a month for five years, and they didn't get one thing done the entire five years. And so. And so, I got a kind of a bad taste in my mouth for art by committee. But that said, I'll do it however you want to, but one thought is to do a call for artists, select something that I think would work, and bring it to you.
I think we had an art committee that helped do something with the art here in the building, so it was a short, well-defined, not an infinite, you know, art committee, but here's your project, help us.
Yeah, I don't know if, like, Michelangelo or Pablo Picasso had a committee to report to. I doubt it.
That's not in our budget.
Yeah, I would be very happy to let the city manager do a request for proposals and then bring us what he thought was good, so, in any event.
Councilmember Smith, and then Councilmember Sperry.
I would like to see as if we are going to go through with it, if we really factor in the lighting then, because I think lighting would be a really important aspect of this if we're going to spend it, the money on it, I just--
You know, we could bring in, just have a streetlight, a Cobra head come in and put near it.
Do solar, solar light.
So, Councilmember Sperry.
Yes, so I think what I'm hearing is simpler, cheaper, and it sounds like nobody wants a big committee, so, that's, so I'd be okay with, under those conditions.
Councilmember Herbig.
Doesn't PSE have to move around streetlights if we ask them to?
There you go, now you're talking.
Pretty sure it's part of our franchise agreement, right?
Only if we're improving the right-of-way.
Well, we are, the bridge is prettier.
So, let me make, comment on that. I mean, lighting can totally change how this looks 90% of the year, and most, you know, art like this isn't going to look as good with lighting from up above coming down on it. It needs to go up. And so, I would, if we're going to do it, I think we want to do it right. That, I guess, is my point, so.
Otherwise, it might be hard to see it. Yeah, I mean, yes, obviously, I would want to look at lighting, certainly.
All right?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, councilmember, reports, initiatives. Thoughts, Councilmember Smith?
Just enjoyed the last week immensely on this Peter Kagayama fun stuff, and also enjoyed having Peter and Rob and staff over for breakfast at my house. That was a lot of fun, and so, really enjoyed it. It's kind of an odd way to spend a Tuesday morning, but it was very enjoyable.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, it was a great week. I enjoyed very much being able to attend the workshop at the end, and I also enjoyed reading our weekly update. I mean, on top of the, for the love of Kenmore, and on and on and on, I hear that Kenmore took first, second, and third in kayaking, with women's kayaking.
Yeah, the Women's Open 5K down in Gig Harbor, it was fun to see that happen.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Absolutely amazing. Bye.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski.
Enjoyed the workshop and enjoyed helping out at the hydroplane races, too. That was fun.
Deputy Mayor.
Friday morning, we had an ETP meeting, and we had two really interesting speakers. Representative Jessen Farrell, who represents us, as you all know, in the 46th district, but very few of the other cities in ETP, was eager to come and talk to us, and she's on the transportation committee, and she was very well-received by the whole group and a lot of good questions. And I think she probably went on for close to 45 minutes, which was really good. And then she was leaving, and we started on some, some business items, and then Congresswoman Del Benny shows up for another half hour, 45 minutes of talk and questions. And so, it was a very, very interesting meeting and got a lot of good questions answered. Hydroplanes, boy, what a day. You know, last year, it rained. This year, what a beautiful afternoon it was, and just a lot of fun with those hydroplanes roaring up and down the river. They didn't have the weather, there were rollers out there in the lake, so they didn't do any racing out in the lake, but by golly, did they go up and down the river. And towards the end of the afternoon, Nigel and I and Stacy were at Squire's Landing, watching them come up and rounding that mark up there, and, boy, they were coming pretty close to the rocks, and we got some, some great pictures. Talk about videos and pictures. Have you all seen the Spencer 68 video that they have with a lady with a bike doing her shopping, and then goes around different places around town, and then winds up back at Spencer 68, which is kind of cool. I really liked the way they did that. We've got an AWC meeting coming up towards the end of June. The registration for it just opened on the 8th, I believe. Saturday night, I called, or went online and registered for it, but couldn't get lodging over in Wenatchee. So, I'm on a waiting list, but I'd encourage everybody to, if you could make it over there for that, it's the 23rd through the 26th of June, not far away, don't have to fly there, go over in the morning, come back a couple of days later. They're, they're working on more housing, so hopefully, it'll open up. That's all I have.
Kayaks, canoe, kayaks. We've got a future Olympian that's going to be living with us for, until Rio, so, yeah. Sherry and I are pretty excited about that one. I was there at, at Squire's Landing, at the Waterfront Activity Center, watching the, watching the kayaks also, watching the hydros also, until I had to go to dance rehearsal, the dress, the final dress rehearsal before Dancing with Stars. That turned out to be a lot of fun. I had a great cheering section. Leslie was there, along with Kathleen and Samantha from here and my wife, and we managed to keep it a secret from my wife until 45 minutes before showtime, when she decided that she wanted to know what the heck she was getting into that night, and why was I asking her to come there? And so, she Googled it and figured it out. So, anyway, Buddy Hunt, I think, I think you guys will enjoy hearing this. He said, wow, thank you to the Kenmore City Council. What an incredible honor to be blessed with. I don't even know where to begin with how much this means to me. For a city to show this kind of appreciation to a regular citizen is so amazing. I really owe this to my mom, Lonnie, for her raising me and my sisters by herself through her optimism, optimism while she struggled, while struggling as we were growing up. She taught me to always help wherever possible. With karma, help will be returned as needed, and my wife and baby make me want to make the world better for tomorrow, as well as strive to be a better me. And thank God for the opportunities to be able to help Kenmore. You are my home. Thank you for this honor. I, that's just awesome, so, anyway.
Co-creator.
I wanted to share that, share that with you guys. So, there's a couple of issues that have come up. PCERN, PCERN is going to be on the ballot April 23rd. There's a special, special ballot. I am going to be personally supporting the initiative. It's to replace the aging radio equipment in police and fire, to make everybody be able to talk with each other. Motorola is stopping all support of all the radio equipment in 2018, and this is the plan to get new ones for the police and for the fire, so everybody can talk. If council wanted to, to support that, then fine, but I just want you to know that I, that I am supporting, because I think it's seven cents per thousand is what, and public will vote on it. So, I just think the need is there, and I think it's a pretty good idea. The other thing that has come up, and this came up from Brianna this morning, is the supporting Keep Washington Moving and their, and their thing on getting a transportation bill passed finally. So, I don't know where you guys are on that. I think, Nigel, you had some questions earlier, but that's something else that I am going to personally sign on to, unless there's objections from council members. Certainly won't do it.
Your Honor, thank you for bringing that up. So, what I'd like to do is repass, or have you repass, the resolution updated next Monday night. But in the meantime, I don't know if you saw Brianna's email, but the things about us Facebook posting about it and things like that, we plan on doing if there are no objections.
I posted something on Kenmore Neighbors over the weekend for Brianna, and so, I think it's important that we all stand up and try to get this bill passed, because we've been at it for a long time, and there is significant amount of money in there for Kenmore, so, to help us with our program. So, I think, with that--
Can I have a clarification?
Sure.
And it has to do with what Alan mentioned on that event you're going to in June. Rob, do you know what the date is for the retreat? Has that been decided, or is that still kind of half?
Oh, thank you. I tried to hit it in the one-on-ones, but I don't know if I caught everybody, but really can't find a time in June, and then July happens, and then we're taking August off. And so, I'm thinking that if we want to have a retreat, we think about one in September.
Yeah, the retreat is 23 through 26. I mean, I mean, the AWC meeting is 23 through 26, so. Anything else? We're adjourned.